Stephanie Andover.
Stephanie Andover.
Rob Sattle, Hebron.
Joe Connor, Hebron.
Jessica Hebron.
I'm from Lillim, Hebron.
Yes, yes, Sandy.
David Shmalaski, Marlborough.
Karen DiPomato, Warthyr.
Eve Gall, Business Manager, Regional School District Eight.
Pepla, Regional School District Eight Superintendent.
Sue Rampley, Department of Marlborough.
Everyone can stand for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Any other comments? Any comments tonight? All right. Any additions or deletions to the agenda? All right, student rep report?
Yes, so my English class yelled at me today and told me to bring up parking issue again. It's it's kind of an issue. A lot of students, I've heard them talk about how they want spots to be assigned because a lot of people show up in the morning and they can't find spots. And there's also a lot of complaints about the fact that you have to pay to park your vets because there's no argument that people from like the general public who vote a vet, so why shouldn't we be able to park our vet? Well, so yeah, that's a thing I've heard from a lot of students and a lot of people know how much it costs to actually park at school, but I think the biggest issue is the fact that students having parking finding places to park and if they park where they're not supposed to park, they're going to be pulled out of the classes and like time that we're supposed to be learning, you know, and go leave their cars. So I've heard lots of kids talking about that and my English class will be mentioning that, so that's kind of an issue that a lot of people are talking about.
I have luck. I'm a senior class, a lot of us are just pretty much in colleges and kind of getting ready for the end of the season.
I do not have anything to the board share report, so I'll turn it over to the report of the superintendent.
Um, just a couple of things. Um, we did send out a parent transportation survey to parents in both middle school and high school. Hopefully you've received that and are giving us some feedback around some questions we have around options for opting out of transportation. We're just looking for some feedback right now from parents. Um, we also have received quite a bit of compliments to the district and to the schools and I just kind of want to share some of those. From the Red Cross, because of the outstanding contributions that our school has in relation to blood collection, we've actually been awarded as the 2020 premier blood partner. And as part of that, we get a certificate, we get some special promotional tools, we get a discount on their online store at the Red Cross and a like a leadership pin. So I think that's again, it's an awesome compliment to our school and our community for their support of the blood donation programs. In addition, we also have really been working very hard with our community partners and with our community schools on our innovation council and our CTE classes. And we've had some compliments coming our way from them as well. In particular, Charles Daniels from Webco Plastics has sent an email just wanting to say and wanting to make sure that we all understand how impressed he is with our innovation programs and the committed educators, that the stakeholder buy-in from our various groups has been amazing and something that they haven't seen in in other schools and that they are really excited about the opportunities for our students in rewarding lifelong careers, especially manufacturing programs. Our Hebron Innovation Council has just met and that includes our elementary school and area businesses and their support of the program, as well as the UConn School of Engineering has given us feedback saying that they are thrilled to be part of this opportunity and happy that Ram is making those connections for students both in the community and with education. So again, wonderful compliments to our school and to the program. Um, as a reminder, we have a community forum for the Board of Education on March 2nd. It's at six o'clock PM in the Ram High School Media Center and the board will be there and is looking forward to anybody who wants to come and share our thoughts, ideas, conversations with the board. We also had our students that just arrived back from the Spain field trip, which I heard was wonderful. And a parent actually emailed tonight and wanted to make sure that we shared with the board that they felt that their son was a very lucky person to be able to go, that the teachers were amazing as part of the chaperoning and did an amazing job planning and executing the travel experience. The itinerary was full and rich of culture and historical exposure and really a once-in-a-lifetime experience. So I think that that's a wonderful compliment as well to our school and our educators. And lastly, we are in the process of working through our food service review of proposals for food service vendors for next year. And we should have more at the March 16 board meeting where we are with looking at that as an opportunity for possibly looking at other vendors that might be providing food service in the future.
About the manufacturing pipeline, did Scott's Electrograph added into that program? I mentioned that about a year ago.
I I know that I forwarded that. I would have to find out and get back to you.
Because they were very eager to participate.
I can get back to you about that.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to the consent agenda. Someone like to make a motion? Nine point one approval minutes. You don't have any personal actions. Make a motion to accept the consent agenda approval minutes. Um, discussion and I have a correction on one. February 3rd, I believe Scott was at this meeting and he's not listed as a board member present. That's the only change that I have. Does anybody else have any changes? Were you there, Scott, or you guys?
Yeah, definitely was there and yeah, definitely. There were, it was, it was the February 3 meeting. Hold on, I got it marked there. It's just a, it's a small addition unless I missed it in there. When we were going through the Woods program and we talked about the challenges that there are with potentially having a full-time FTE for Woods because of all kinds of rules about who can do that and how long we can do it more, we settled on the fact and I think the minutes reflect that the you can you can sustain what we ended up with for the motion with two point fours. And and I specifically asked if it was if the budgeted number of money would cover that and Mr. Leslie said that if it would. I just wanted to make sure that what we passed with the amount of money that we passed, was that sustainable? And it wasn't going to be, oh, if we do two point fours and it's now $20,000 more and we don't have enough to do it.
So is that something you want added?
Yes, just, just one, I mean, the short version is the budgeted amount of funds as long as, I mean, Mr. Leslie's sitting right there, he can confirm, I think he said we'd be okay unless you don't remember that. I remember distinctly.
Karen, are you good with those two?
Yeah, it's not supposed to be part of the motion, it's just supposed to be a statement?
Yeah, yeah. A question and answer. Yeah.
All right, all those in favor with those two additions? Aye. All right, um, old business, sabbatical leave, ten point one.
Make a motion for three, you're not a brand, Dave, sabbatical leave to a couple of Woods.
I just want to make sure I heard you, do not.
Do not.
Is there a second on the floor?
I'll second it for discussion.
Is there a discussion?
Yeah, I just paid sabbatical leave, I just don't think that we should yet make that up. It doesn't seem to vent at the the school system that much. It seems like it's clearly an effort to change careers and I think it's a bad precedent to set. It should be something education related and it's really not. Nurse and pre is a totally different program.
Did you happen to read what his letter that he sent us?
Yes, oh, yeah, yeah.
He made it clear that he wasn't, has had any intention of leaving.
Okay, I, it's, it's just a lot of, it's a lot of money and our life is very, very tight and I don't really want to set a precedent of of doing things that are not education-related. I think it's.
Do we have reimbursement for continuing education classes?
They do. So in the teacher's contract, there is reimbursable funds for classes set aside every single year depending on the number of people that apply for it, but then it depends on how much money they get back, but it is in their contract, same with administrators.
Do we have, has that, has there been a lot of use of that money?
Every year, sure.
Yeah. It's fully used, is it?
Yeah.
Do we know what the total budget amount?
I believe in the teacher's contract is $15,000 and I believe and the administrators it is sixteen.
Sixteen per administrator.
Yeah.
All right, any other discussion?
What is the administration's position on this?
Um, I have not spoken to the administration. The policy states that it needs to be upon recommendation of the superintendent and so although I'm I'm sure the administration has an opinion, it really, it's really something that I need to be able to bring an opinion to the board about that so I can share with you what my thoughts are. I think I would always love to encourage and support continuing growth and development of teachers and administrators. However, I again, don't see that this is necessarily closely tied to a benefit within Ram and the teaching that Todd is doing and so I would not support the sabbatical leave.
One other thing to note, some of the things that he brought in his letter were that he could act as a backup nurse and or he could be a nurse on field trips and he can't do that because of, you know, contract and union issues, so.
Just another question, are the teachers CPR certified?
We offer, it's not a requirement, but we offer CPR and first day training. As a matter of fact, we just did that as well as sabbatical leave training recently and we'll be offering, excuse me, we did sabbatical, we're offering CPR and first day training in March and then June for teachers to renew.
Any other discussion?
There is some other issues that we had a couple of years ago, just for the board's reminder. You know, we allowed Mr. Amp when he was going for the national team of handicap US Olympics, we had granted permission for him to take a sabbatical or leave of absence, I think it was, with allowing him to represent our country, our district, his hometown. And creatively, I guess we, I think we remember if I remember correctly, it was sick time and vacation.
Right, yeah.
Right? So has it maybe a friendly, I don't know if it's a friendly amendment, but I would, I understand this gentleman has been, you know, a valuable teacher at our school for 12 years, so I would like to see, I do agree that I think it's a stretch with the correlation, but how about a unpaid sabbatical?
Oh, I'd be fine with that.
You know, I'm just, I don't know if that's, I know you have a motion on the table, but I'm just throwing, is this part of discussion or do I have to make a friendly movement, make a friendly amendment to the motion? Is it still a discussion? Okay. So maybe as an alternative to the, you know, just saying no, that we look at options of, you know, unpaid guaranteeing his job back within what he's done with his completion of his course, with the intent that he's obviously coming back, but that's a win-win, I think, approach, right? We don't, doesn't cost the district any money.
Right, right.
We don't lose a valuable person that who's been here for 12 years and I think that the kids and the staff like him and or maybe, I don't know how much vacation time he has or sick time he has, but maybe we should look at some of that or maybe we can as as another option. I hate to just throw and say no completely.
Right.
I'd like to work, but I do agree with you, Dave, because we, it would be 68,000. My other question, I guess, Dr. Lai is, we think we asked this, is it benefits included in this?
So it would still be the benefits and I could also ask, there was another question around whether there was additional clinical work, I think, and you had wanted to know and that the clinical work is encompassed within this entire timeframe of this course. So there is no additional time outside of the time that he was.
Just to be clear, the 68,000 did not include that contract, so that that would be in addition, so it'd be probably closer to 100,000, 9,000.
I think something over.
Yeah, yeah.
Would the unpaid sabbatical, continued benefits?
It would not be, so sabbatical leave is a very clear definition in the contract. It would be unpaid leave and I can certainly bring back that possibility to Mr. Helman and ask him if that would be what he would now like to ask the board for as an option. And what was your question?
Benefits, would he still?
I would have to look into because we have, if you're unpaid, you'd have to take over, so you have a hundred percent.
Sorry, just another question, kind of new. The education money that's available, the 15,000, are there any stipulations as to what they use that for?
It's, it's in the contract. They have to get approval for the coursework. I sign off on that when they complete the coursework, they have to show that they've continued to pass the classes. The number of teachers that submit the reimbursable funds for that, we just divide up the number of people, the amount of money, and everybody gets a portion of it.
But it doesn't, there's nothing, it doesn't say that it has to be in their area of study or area of teaching?
I would have to look at it, I don't think it sounds specific.
All right, so any further discussion right now? So are we going to amend the motion?
Would you accept the friendly amendment?
Sure. Well, but, but are, what are we, are you clear on what you want to change, you know, like vacation or on your safety?
We can always go back and give it back to the superintendent if it was offered.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm fine with, I'm certainly fine with unpaid leave, yeah.
With the guarantee of his job back?
Does the contract allow him to have his? I would have to, so what I would need to do is to look at the contract to make sure that you're not stepping out, by making that motion, you're not stepping outside of the actual language of the contract, so.
But doesn't the contract already state that in the sabbatical? If it was, if it was paid, he would be guaranteed his job back.
Right, but unpaid leave, I just want to check the language of it because it is a totally different section of the contract, it's a totally different article of the contract.
So there's, there's nothing to worry about, keep him from coming back next, next meeting, yes, or unpaid leave, if that's something we can do and also we have the right to come back.
So maybe if.
So what would you like us, do you want to just leave it at David's motion then?
I would leave it at your motion, approve it or not, and then I can bring back the suggestions and the conversation from the board and if Mr. Helman would like to write another letter to the board requesting something else that's allowed in the contract, we can bring that back the next meeting.
All right, any further discussions? All right, all those in favor?
The motion again, do not.
Do not, sorry, okay. All those in favor? Any abstentions? You're abstaining? I'm going to vote no.
You're going to vote, do you have a name, again, the motion? Yes.
All right, so moving on to 11.1, budget overview.
It's supposed to be the department coordinators, so they, the department coordinators, we have the, we have the presentations in your packet, they'll come up here, presented, and so I think just our side right here needs a slide or two.
So I think the first presentation is.
Good evening. Um, the school counseling department's goal is connected to the strategic plan goal number one, along with the school goal and objective that focuses on college and career readiness and opportunities for growth. More specifically, our department's goal this year is focusing on a cohort of seniors, juniors, and freshman students who have scored below proficient in either math and/or the ERW on the SAT and/or the PSAT. Their progress has been monitored and 80% of these students will demonstrate growth and progress towards college and career readiness in a variety of ways, which will include college acceptance, job placement, success in core academic classes and support, excuse me, support classes such as math for success and reading for success, along with utilizing Khan Academy and participating in college and career readiness programming. So a review of our budget request shows that the majority of our line items are very similar, with one exception being an increase from approximately $1,000 to $8,000 in the area of online class support. So this is requesting the support for online classes in response to new graduation requirements and scheduling conflicts. So the funding will be used to provide students with increased online opportunities for credit attainment and really allowing for more options and flexibility with choices reflected online. So we just like to highlight some of our programming within the department, seven through 12. We continue to plan and deliver curriculum to all grades through the student success plan model. So for example, at the middle school, we continue to do goal setting lessons with them along with college, sorry, career path exploration and transition planning. They recently had an event a few weeks ago, they were able to see a lot of our elective offerings and then go back and look at some career pathways connected to that. At the high school, we continue to focus on the pathways as well with our freshmen and our sophomores and classroom lessons. We also do resume writing with our sophomores and our juniors and we focus on post-secondary planning as well of our juniors and our seniors. And this year, Lori Connor is our AP coordinator. She registered 236 students for 432 AP exams and helped transition 23 of our AP teachers to the College Board's new online registration system and the AP classroom support system. So that was a huge undertaking that was pretty much forced upon us by the College Board, so we had to react to that change. In terms of professional development, counselors within the department have gone on various trainings and workshops and so we just included a few to highlight. They include the unpaid experiential learning program, Art for Job Course, functional behavioral analysis, English language learners, threat assessment, and social emotional learning workshops. One of our school counselors continues to be a representative with our hunger action team, which provides support for our local families in need. And we're proud of the connection that we made with the University of New Haven and they graciously offered to do another instant decision day with us this year. So we offered a second opportunity for students, those that wanted to apply. Thirteen of our students were admitted on the spot and they all received merit scholarships. We also continue to provide curriculum through several of our advisories throughout the year. We've done six already and we're about to do the seventh one next week with our sophomores doing a transcript review. But other curriculum that we've delivered throughout the year include Khan Academy and Linkage, we've done stuff with course registration, post-secondary planning, PSAT preparation, and like I said, next week will be the transcript review. We've continued to host an after-school opportunity for grade 10 and grade 11 students through our partnership with UConn. It's a leadership program that they attend weekly, so we have seven students attend that program this past fall. And counselors try to go out and do some professional development in the well-local, but the New England area, so they've attended eight different college campuses so far this year and they hope to do a few more in the spring. But what's nice is they get to see a tour, they get to meet with representatives, they collect all the information, they come back and they put it on the Google Drive for us so then all of the counselors are able to readily access that. So when we meet with students and parents, especially this time of year for our post-secondary planning meetings, we're able to access that information. And we continue to have our support, have a collaboration with AHM, especially around the holidays for families in need, so they're able to provide us with gift cards that we then identify families in need and we're able to provide that to families and students connected to Ram. And another highlight is we continue our partnership with Samantha Schattle, our CTE coordinator, in planning for two of our more popular fall programs, which include the College Fair and our Career Day. And we wanted to share with you five initiatives that we're proud of, that we continue to work on and get ready for, one being we are providing some support and development for college and career readiness for our students, our seniors in particular. So in collaboration with Samantha Schattle, along with the Junior Achievement Group, we're providing programming that focuses on writing, resume writing and interviewing skills. So we're fortunate to have 40 local professionals within the community volunteer their time on March 13th and they're going to be coming to Ram and we have a half day that day, early dismissal day, so they're going to be doing a program with us that's going to focus on those skills. So it's a neat opportunity for our seniors to embark on this opportunity before graduation and through this, they're going to be getting a rubric where they're going to be assessed on their interviewing skills, they're going to be getting feedback from these professionals and when they're not participating in this event, there's going to be two other events that we'll be doing, one in which they're going to be rating their own soft skills and they're also going to be in their own role as a hiring manager where they're going to critique different cover letters and resumes just to try and get some more skill development in those areas. So that's brand new to us that we're offering to the seniors for the very first time, so we're very excited about that. Another partnership that we're continuing to develop is with Quelz, which is the Connecticut Women's Education and Legal Fund. So we're fortunate to start that up last year with our freshmen and it was highly successful. So that was a career networking workshop and the freshmen really benefited from this. So over the summer, we tried to brainstorm to see how could we expand on that, so we wanted to see if that's something our sophomores could also do. So Quelz has graciously accepted that request of ours and so they're partnering with us and we're going to be doing that workshop coming up on March 12th. So it's a great opportunity for our freshmen and sophomores to make those connections and it's almost going to be like a, like a speed dating concept and they're going to be going around our library and networking with different professionals and learning about different careers, but it's going to be a lot more interactive than everything just kind of being presented to them and just talk acts.
Any abstentions? You're abstaining? I'm gonna vote no.
You're gonna vote, do you have any again for motion?
Yes. Alright, so moving on to eleven point one. Subject overview. It's supposed to be the department coordinators. So they've, the department coordinators, we have the presentations in your packet, they'll come up here to present. And so I think just our slide right here needs a slide as well. So I think the first presentation is.
Good evening. Um, the school counseling department's goal is connected to the strategic plan goal number one, along with the school goal and objective that focuses on college and career readiness and opportunities for growth. More specifically, um, our department's goal this year is focusing on a cohort of seniors, juniors, and freshman students who have scored below proficient in either math and/or the ERW, on the SAT and/or the PSAT. Their progress has been monitored, and eighty percent of these students will demonstrate growth and progress towards college and career readiness in a variety of ways, which will include college acceptance, job placement, success in core academic classes, and support classes, excuse me, support classes such as Math for Success and Reading for Success, along with utilizing Khan Academy and participating in college and career readiness programming. So a review of our budget request shows that the majority of our line items are very similar, with one exception being an increase from approximately one thousand dollars to eight thousand dollars in the area of online class support. So this is requesting the support for online classes in response to new graduation requirements and scheduling conflicts. So the funding will be used to provide students with increased online opportunities for credit attainment, and really allowing for more options and flexibility with choices of classes online. So we'd just like to highlight some of our programming within the department, seven through twelve. We continue to plan and deliver curriculum to all grades through the student success plan model. So for example, at the middle school, we continue to do goal-setting lessons with them, along with college, sorry, career path exploration and transition planning. They recently had an event a few weeks ago. They were able to see a lot of our elective offerings and then go back and look at some career pathways connected to that. At the high school, we continue to focus on the pathways as well with our freshmen and our sophomores and classroom lessons. We also do resume writing with our sophomores and our juniors, and we focus on post-secondary planning as well of our juniors and our seniors. And this year Lori Conner is our AP coordinator. She registered two hundred and thirty-six students for four hundred and thirty-two AP exams and helped transition twenty-three of our AP teachers to the College Board's new online registration system and the AP classroom support system. So that was a huge undertaking that was pretty much forced upon us by the College Board. So we had to react to that change. In terms of professional development, counselors within the department have gone on various trainings and workshops, and so we just included a few to highlight. They include the unpaid experiential learning program, Art for Job Course, Functional Behavioral Analysis, English Language Learners, Threat Assessment, and Social Emotional Learning Workshops. One of our school counselors continues to be a representative with our Hunger Action Team, which provides support for our local families in need. And we're proud of the connection that we made with the University of New Haven, and they graciously offered to do another instant decision day with us this year. So we offered a second opportunity for students, those that wanted to apply. Thirteen of our students were admitted on the spot and they all received merit scholarships. We also continue to provide curriculum through several of our advisories throughout the year. We've done six already, and we're about to do the seventh one next week with our sophomores doing a transcript review. But other curriculum that we've delivered throughout the year include Khan Academy linkage. We've done stuff with course registration, post-secondary planning, PSAT preparation, and like I said, next week will be the transcript review. We've continued to host an after-school opportunity for grade ten and grade eleven students through our partnership with UConn. It's a leadership program that they attend weekly. So we had seven students attend that program this past fall. And counselors try to go out and do some professional development in the well-local, but the New England area. So they've attended eight different college campuses so far this year. And they hope to do a few more in the spring. But what's nice is they get to see a tour, they get to meet with representatives, they collect all the information, they come back and they put it on the Google Drive for us. So then all of the counselors are able to readily access that. So when we meet with students and parents, especially this time of year for our post-secondary planning meetings, we're able to access that information. And we continue to have our support, or have a collaboration with AHM, especially around the holidays for families in need. So they're able to provide us with gift cards that we then identify families in need, and we're able to provide that to families and students connected to Ram. And another highlight is we continue our partnership with Samantha Shattle, our CTE coordinator, in planning for two of our more popular fall programs, which include the College Fair and our Career Day. And we wanted to share with you five initiatives that we're proud of, that we continue to work on and get ready for. One being, we are providing some support and development for college and career readiness for our students, our seniors in particular. So in collaboration with Samantha Shattle, along with the Junior Achievement Group, we're providing programming that focuses on writing, resume writing, and interviewing skills. So we're fortunate to have forty local professionals within the community volunteer their time on March thirteenth, and they're gonna be coming to Ram. And we have a half-day that day, early businessable day. So they're gonna be doing a program with us that's gonna focus on those skills. So it's a neat opportunity for our seniors to embark on this opportunity before graduation. And through this, they're going to be getting a rubric where they're gonna be assessed on their interviewing skills. They're gonna be getting feedback from these professionals. And when they're not participating in this event, there's gonna be two other events that we'll be doing, one in which they're gonna be rating their own soft skills. And they're also going to be in their own role as a hiring manager, where they're going to critique different cover letters and resumes just to try and get some more skill development in those areas. So that's brand-new to us that we're offering to the seniors for the very first time. So we're very excited about that. Another partnership that we're continuing to develop is with QLAF, which is the Connecticut Women's Education and Legal Fund. So we're fortunate to start that up last year with our freshmen, and it was highly successful. So that was a career networking workshop, and the freshmen really benefited from this. So over the summer, we tried to brainstorm to see how could we expand on that. So we wanted to see if that's something our sophomores could also do. So QLAF has graciously accepted that request of ours, and so they're partnering with us, and we're gonna be doing that workshop coming up on March twelfth. So it's a great opportunity for our freshmen and sophomores to make those connections. And it's almost gonna be like a, like a speed dating concept, and they're gonna be going around our library and networking with different professionals and learning about different careers. But it's gonna be a lot more interactive than everything just kind of being presented to them and just talk at. Another initiative this year is there's a feature within our NABEANS program system called the College Rep Visits. So that's a neat tool that our college reps really spoke to us about back in the fall at our College Fair. And we said that we had this opportunity, and this is something that would be beneficial if we were to implement. And they hands-down were like, oh my gosh, if you could get this, this would be great. So we started that up this late fall, early winter. So it's a neat feature that allows them to sign up individually. And we also showed them our school profile back in the fall at our College Fair, and we asked them for feedback on our college, on our school profile. And they actually said we have one of the best school profiles in the area. And I did a nice cross-representation of different profiles. They said we have one of the best. And so they just had a few modifications or suggestions for us over communication-like contact information. So those things will be added to our school profile in the near future to kind of aid in that communication piece. We also are continuing our improvement, getting our students linked with Khan Academy so they can utilize that free resource and service so they can hopefully improve on their SAT and PSAT scores a bit. So they're hearing a lot about that through their math classes and also English classes, but we've done that through classroom lessons and also advisory. So our percentages have really increased since the fall. We get monthly updates from the College Board representative we have. And finally, one of our school counselors had the brainstorm of creating an Instagram account. It's another way of communicating out the things that we're doing within our department. So to date, we've had over two hundred followers with forty-one, over forty posts.
Are there any questions? Start with you, David. Any questions?
She didn't introduce herself, I was asking who you are.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
My heart was probably pounding out of my chest. I'm Jennifer Ma, I'm one of the school council coordinators and Lori Conner.
Is it possible for us to get the updated presentation? Seems like ours is a little out of sync with what you have.
Because they, they have a deadline that they can change them up to today, and I just couldn't get them copied, I'm sorry.
That's okay, could you send that out?
And it will be loaded up as well.
Okay, perfect.
If that's okay.
Yeah, yeah, no, there was, there was more information up there, it was interesting, thank you.
You'll find that with all of them tonight.
The goal around eight percent of those who scored below proficient in the group, how many students is that? How many students did not, are not proficient, and how many students would have been then actually have?
We looked at sixteen. We had each of the counselors take on five, four to five each. So we could just highlight, you know, the ones that we thought were really the ones that were most needy and concentrate on doing the most we can to improve the scores in the short amount of time we have with them.
So the Khan Academy, are they, do they have to do it then?
We can't make them do it, but there's a lot of implementation in the math classes that that's happening. In our Math for Success class, in the math labs. Of course, the counselors are encouraging students to use that as much as possible.
And the, the goal-setting lessons for the middle school, are those individual or are those just?
No, those are individual. The counselors go in through advisories. They do introduction to guidance lesson first, and then they tails, no, like, tails them. They move into a goal-setting lesson with them, and they try to follow up with them, like, after the first quarter to see where they are in their academic and personal goals.
So they need, with each student, individual?
Through advisories, yeah.
I'm just curious, what percentage, I know there's gonna be an increase in for online classes with some of the changes in the credits that are required. What percentage students now do say taken online?
Well, right now, we use VHS primarily. There's a lot of other options that we have out there, Blueprint Education, there's Missouri High. There's another one kids have used, I can't think of it right now. But right now, we have twenty-five seats in the VHS. And I would say, we don't utilize all of it, but it doesn't meet the needs of all of the students. They set registration deadlines, and once those are passed, the kids can't register. So opening it up to other online options is what we're looking for.
Who's making the choice about like which online ones you're going to?
The students, the students do. They, they choose the courses based on, you know, like, if a student wants to do an AP course and it conflicts with a band, you know, they, they have to make that decision, or they do one online. So that's the most beneficial, I think, is when we can open those up to them.
Excited about that online presentation stuff.
It's gonna be a really wonderful day. Yeah, I think it's gonna be exciting for them.
How many counselors do we have on staff right now?
Between middle school and high school? So there's six at the high school and three at the middle school.
Cause in previous years, we've added, I think, right, we recognize your, your need for that, so we're, we're good with, with that.
Yes, it's, it's working out very nice.
That's great.
Yes.
Thank you for helping my children, and they were.
They were wonderful to work with.
So how many students per counselor in the high school do you have?
As, as coordinators, we have a little bit of a reduced course caseload, but on the other tour, they're hovering just under two hundred. One's around one eighty, and a couple others are like one ninety-ish.
Two hundred students?
Approximately.
For one counselor, in the high school?
In the high school, yeah.
Is that, what's the, in the middle school? Not that the middle school, I mean, middle schools are.
They go by teams. And I wanna say it's about two hundred for them as well. There's one counselor that has a reduced low because she's doing more group work and follow-up with NABEANS.
How's it going, thank you.
Is there any kind of online readiness test for students who wanted to do online work? Or is there a filtering system? I, I work in higher ed and online programs, and we don't even recommend it for undergraduates. So when I think about high school students doing online work, is there somebody who sort of counsels them or has them take a readiness test saying, you know, you need the motivation, the self-discipline to really? I'm sure there are students who can. Many students would really have.
Well, I think, we do, we do take a lot of advice from the teachers who know these students, and we know them ourselves. I would hesitate to recommend it for maybe one of, you know, a few of those freshmen that aren't really quite transitioning well into the high school yet. We have personal finance online, which a lot of students will try, and it's really a great opportunity for them because we have the teacher right there in the building who can guide them through whatever, you know, issues they're coming up with. But as far as to answer your question of readiness, no, I don't, we don't know of anything like that that's available.
It's typically done online, it's a questionnaire, and it really tries to get to the heart of, not only are you academically prepared to do this, because it's a lot of, you have to really be self-disciplined, but it's also seeing the technology in your home.
Yes.
Some people just don't really, I know people who still aren't really connected.
Yeah, with VHS, they specify for the classes what's necessary, and the kids gotta review that with me and make sure that they have all of that. Even the prerequisite courses, VHS will say, you know, do you have this prerequisite? And I've got a sign-off saying that they have taken certain classes.
So there is some sort of that.
Okay.
I mean, kids can take, like, foreign languages that aren't offered at Ram also, right?
Correct, yeah. Absolutely. There's one girl studying Poland, Polish, right?
And the, the other question I had to do with the new Instagram account? Is that just for announcements kinds of things, or? Okay, so nothing, not confidential, no, nothing confidential? This is simply push-out announcements? Okay. Cause we know social media and security are not the best.
Right, general. Rob?
I'm good, thank you.
Yeah, I just, I'd just like to say congrats on, on some of these initiatives. I know my daughter's taking part in the UConn Leadership Program, and it's been really good. I like the instant decision day at the colleges, that's, that's really been, seems like it's kind of taken off. The, and the Cwell thing for the, for the girls, I think is, is really good. I did, and the Khan Academy, I was just talking to my, my daughter about that this weekend, and I only knew about it, I asked about it because we got a letter from the State Department of Education on the PSATs. And I don't know if there's more that we can do, maybe to get out to the juniors, the junior class, maybe a letter home to the parents or email or something, and maybe I missed it, maybe it's out there. But getting that letter home this weekend kind of brought it to the forefront, which I was able to talk to about it. And lastly, I know we had the College and Career Fair. I had to go to Glasser Mary High School because theirs was at night. And I understand there's a lot of competition to get the, the college fairs and the reps, and the bigger the fair, the more, higher up on the priority list you get. I would love to see us, as a regional school, get a college fair night so that the parents could attend. I like to think that the kids are very involved with, you know, the college stuff, but I think the parents would have some good insight and questions that they may not be asking. So I would be one to help support and push for that for future days.
That's something we can look into. The drawback, well, not drawback, it's still positive, is that it's a traveling college fair that we're, so I think they've opened bulletins up to make it or something. So you're on a very short timeline, but that's something that we can definitely look into for the future about trying to recruit parents.
Thank you.
Question about the organization, especially in the high school. I know some schools have gone to, like, a senior counselor, so someone who would specialize in the whole application process and getting all the pieces. So they have, like, you know, maybe freshman, sophomore, and half a junior year, they have a counselor. And then, like, junior, senior, they have someone who can really, you know, drill down on that. Have you thought about organizing that way, or?
That has come up in years past, that was a model that we looked at years ago. I think one of the potential negatives is that when it comes time for the recommendations, and especially the, the counselor letter, depending on what year you make that transition, so they're fully, you know, solely working with one counselor on that college piece. It might be, they may not have that relationship for that person who's able to write the letter. So that was one issue in particular that came up for us where we didn't go with that model. So.
In the years past, I mean, the application deadlines were more spread out through the year. Now they just keep pushing them closer and closer. So, you know, November first, November fifteenth, you know, those are like the ones that are, you know, those are the early ones that the kids want to get in. And to leave that to one counselor to process all of those, I would be hesitant.
Well, I wasn't really as, as much thinking about the, the, the letters of recommendation. It's more of the, the searching and trying to find the right fit and how to go about that. It seems to be a skill set that some of the counselors are really, really good at, and some of them, you know, they, they concentrate on other things. And, or, or even having someone dedicated to help that, with that.
Yeah, Glasser Mary has a nice model where they have one person who sits with each student and goes through just the search. It's just, let's sit here and do the search, let me walk you through it. And then the results go to the guidance counselors, and then they meet with the families. So I've looked into that. But part of that was the rep visits, and they talked me through all of the rep visits. So that's where we're starting right now, is getting that established.
All the counselors, like, welcome the opportunity to work with the students and families though on that whole search piece. So, I mean, it's a part, I think, really, there's a lot to it, but yes, like, we will, we'll work with you.
Okay, thank you.
So I would have to echo what Vinnie said. I did mention this last year, same thing about having college there in the evening. So just repeat what Vinnie said there, and then the Instagram is awesome. I like it. Very friendly and welcoming, so good job. I think that's all the questions, so we'll move on to English.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Mary Rose Mead, I'm the department coordinator for English, I'm on the charts. Before I begin my exciting English presentation, I just want to thank the board. I've been at the last several budget presentations, and I left after the budget part. I know you guys stay late, and I really appreciate everything that you do. I know how much time you're taking out of your lives, but it is so appreciated because the kind of things that Dr. La talked about tonight, Kathy Green's globe drive, Samantha Shattle's work in CTE, last meeting in Marlboro, you saw Greg Lechance's work building our math team and our math program, our arts program, the incredible things that Guidance is doing. All of that happens because of your support, the work that the faculty is doing. So I really appreciate it, so thank you so much. So I don't have great machinery or any great story about a kid graduating and getting seventy thousand dollars because of our writing program, but great things are happening in Ram English. Our department goals, we carried over some from last year, primarily because they're really part of our mission, having our students be engaged in the work in the classroom, and also having them take ownership of their learning. Whether the students are going on to higher ed, whether they're going to the military, whether they're going to a trade, having them have ownership of the learning process is incredibly important to us. We do that by offering a great choice for them and pathways for them to learn. We also do this through offering exposure to classic literature as well as contemporary readings. And you'll see in my budget requests, we're looking to build our contemporary library. Fostering literacy, innovating, using research-based practices, supporting growth in reading and writing, and also in speaking, because we know that so much of their lives are gonna depend on their ability to communicate. So we build that into a lot of our work. Developing seven, twelve stack holding for writing instruction. We want to make sure that the seven through twelve experience is preparing them to be successful communicators when they graduate. We're particularly looking this year at grammar. There's been a shift in the way the elementary schools are delivering grammar instruction. And as a result, we're noticing that students are coming in with different skill sets. And so we've had to decide, how are we going to acknowledge that? How are we gonna support our students to build in areas where they may not feel as confident? And that's really a seven, twelve initiative for us. And we're also working to build a culture of reading and a culture of critical thinking. If you come into the high school, if you walk by the library, we have a big bulletin board now we put out at Valentine's Day. And the students wrote a book that they love on it, on a heart, that's up there. Outside of the English office, we have four big windows with a little ledge, and those ledges are full of books that students can take and take home, and they can become theirs. And that's because of the partnership we have with the Douglas Library in Hebron. After their book sales, if there's a number of young adult collections that they can't hold on to, or they have too much, they'll call me, I'll go over, bring boxes back. And we'll make sure that those shelves are constantly full. And there's nothing more heartening for an English teacher to come out of our room and see a collection of students discerning which book that they want to bring home for the weekend. And it's nice if they can take them and it's theirs. So this is a terrific part of our goal. Critical thinking also, you'll see, is built into all of our classrooms, and the kinds of things that we're requesting help us to build students' critical thinking skills. So we want books. I mean, trade paperbacks is not, not big giant machines that do cutting out. Just the books that are the kinds of things that our students can engage with. Both contemporary and of course, classics continue to be important. But recently, we know, when I came in as department coordinator, I noticed that we had a lot of classic literature written by the same type of person. And our goal has been to make sure that multiple voices are representative, and also that at every grade level, we're giving students an opportunity to engage with literature and, and some nonfiction that speaks to where they are right now, to this time, to their lives. And that's incredibly important to us, and your support has allowed us to get some amazing titles. Instructional materials and online software to support student growth in reading and writing. We've been looking really for great programs that will help us track student growth, but also encourage student growth. Instructional supplies to engage students in an active classroom. You cannot believe how awesome those giant Post-its are, and then the little Post-its. And if you go into our classrooms, they're all over the place. And that also rolls into our critical thinking, having our students put their thinking right out on paper so that they can look at it, talk about it. so that they can look at it, talk about it, synthesize ideas, and become metacognitive and understand how they're learning as well. And periodicals help us have contemporary stories, where we compare them with something that might be a piece of fiction, and we can draw in something contemporary very timely. We have multiple partnerships, Douglas Library, Richmond Library in Marlboro, Fund for Teachers, Connecticut Office for the Arts, and we've had Bohegan Child Challenge grant as well. I'm super excited to share that just as of last week, we were approved for the AP Capstone Program. This is something that was applied for, through the programming when we rolled out the inquiry copy. So if you want to save one, pass it down, I'll bring yours. So it's quite a process, I, as I found applying for it, I had to write an essay, just like the students. I came into my, I said, I'm going to write an essay, just like all of you from the college. Offering the Capstone Diploma gives students a chance to engage in several classes that are research-based, and they're also built upon their own level of curiosity. We have to offer them in a series, so the student has to take the AP Seminar class in order to take the AP Research Class. And the AP Research Class is really one full year, like doing a master's thesis. It's incredible. I've been very fortunate through the whole process to be working with the principal at Connor High School. And I just had an opportunity to work also with the teacher there that teaches the AP Seminar class. And it was absolutely, they've been incredible partners in this for me, incredibly helpful. And Ellen Bernstein at College Board has also been terrific. I, I won't go in too much detail with the program, but giving the students the opportunity to earn the Capstone Diploma from Ram High School is very significant. As of 2018, only 118 schools in the United States offer the AP Capstone Diploma. I think the last listing in Connecticut was only 19 schools, so now there's 20. So it's a really exciting program to have for our students. And it, it really does offer students who maybe not, maybe not the ones that would always go towards an AP curriculum, because there's so much opportunity for students to investigate and research, things that they're passionate about. It offers another avenue for students who are looking for a place to grow their learning. We're committed to continuous growth. I just, I wanted to share just a little bit of data here. The English Language Arts SAT is very different now than when we, most of us took it. I don't know if you just had analogies, I have analogies on mine. It's now broken down into 40% is reading about science, 40% is about social studies, 20% is literature, and then there's segments that focus on words in context, and it also focuses on great grammar and, and higher level grammar when you get to the actual SAT. So looking at our work in ELA, the state, the blue is the, is the benchmark. So blue means you met the benchmark, 6% of the students that are near benchmark. So some of those are within 10 or 20 points of the benchmark. And then the gray is the area that where the students are needing to strengthen their skills. The state, 62% made benchmark at Ram, 83% in ELA made benchmark. One particular slide that I'm, is I'm happy with, this was for the entire cohort that took that school day SAT across the country. 53% met benchmark. When we look at our achievement gap, all the students in our achievement gap, 54% made benchmark. So in terms of looking at just very raw data, we're doing really positive work. That doesn't mean that we're not still working. And you'll see Jen will talk in her presentation about what we're doing across departments. Because there are different kinds of disciplines that are evaluated, reading in science, reading in social studies, we're trying to make sure that we're supporting literacy across all areas. So part of that is within our classes, we talked about Con Academy here, the classes, we incorporate Con Academy in some places. Some of the videos for the language arts are not very good, we've decided, so we've found other ways. But having students practice problems, we've actually pulled the PSAT books and had the students do practice problems. We'll throw in a words in context piece at the beginning of a class, we do a word unit lesson on that. I'm helping students understand how to approach those skills when they're doing, taking SATs. But we're really doing it across multiple disciplines for the ELA section. Whereas math, I know they're offering the new math for SAT course where it's just math. That's where that skill is primarily grown. So we're working on these ELA skills across disciplines as well. And so not a lot of fancy, but we are taking what the students are doing, they're taking what they're doing, and they're applying them to real-life activities. We continue to produce our literary magazine. Caroline Meyer here, we have students participate in the School for Ethical Education Laws of Life Essay Contest. Over 1,000 students in the state of Connecticut participate, X amount go to the judges. And for the last several years, we've had either two or three winners in the top 10, which is crazy. Caroline was in the top two last year and was asked to share her essay at the banquet, and it's a, it's like nice plates, glasses silverware, like not classy. Couldn't believe the first time I walked into that. We continue to run the Poetry Out Loud program, which started with about eight participants, and now we have over 120 students participate this year. Justin Adams is going to represent us in the state finals. And we also continue to have our publication course. I think you may be getting copies today of The Ramblers, it's the community edition. And the work that Shelley Swickie and Margaret Clifton do, empowering students to create something that then goes out to parents, to their peers, and to the community. These students are leaving with skills that I, I don't know another high school that does this kind of work and requires this much, this much real-life publishing work. So we're super proud of what we're doing. So we continue to offer college-level courses. We've been in a bit of a disaster because MCC pulled our courses, we got out ahead of that for the most part. So we've articulated our courses with Eastern Connecticut State University, and are waiting to hear on UConn is reconnecting with them. We continue to have the AP courses as well. Our writing lab continues to be utilized a great deal. There's some periods when they have to move from the small writing lab to a bigger classroom to accommodate the number of students that are coming. But that is working to support our students as well. That ends the lesson. Are there any questions? Vinnie, I'll start with you.
Sure, just congrats on the Capstone and to Meg and her team with The Ramblers. It's an enjoyable read, and I'm glad the kids are getting it.
Thanks, and I should have said thank you to the other presenter before you, because I'm a, I'm a customer times two, and you guys do a great job, and just a phenomenal job with my kids. But I don't have any more, so that'll be the last one. You're lucky now. I just had a question, and this probably will end up being a, a team effort. I love the fact that this, you're updating trade paperbacks and with the contemporary and classic novels. I'm trying to tie that into the budget book, and I'm just curious, and again, it could be a Pat and/or Eva, because it, I'm, I'm assuming that if you have it on here as a budget request, that you're either didn't request last year, or you're requesting more. And I, I just can't tell, and so does, I'm on page 49 of the budget book, is it, does that fall under textbooks?
It falls under instructional supplies.
All right, so that one I, all right.
Because textbooks are usually larger anthologies, because we consider a trade paperback, uninstructional.
Okay. And, and just as a, and I don't even know if this is humanly possible, but I'll just throw it as a comment, see if the board groans or you guys groan, or either way. Just for questions like that, is there a way to either put, I think it's probably impossible to have the actual budget numbers in these presentations. Is that why would you do the budget book, but is it like to have a pointer?
I can tell you basically, right, right. I can tell you where, I can tell you where most things fall. So high school, we don't have anything floating for software. And middle school, I forget where we eventually landed, because we were, we were figuring out if we could use a title grant to cover re-upping one of the pieces that we have. So that fell, I'm going to say in the $3,000 to $4,000 place when all is said and done. And I think under, I believe the middle school is four, around four for instructional supplies, middle school is five or vice versa. That, that's my last number that I recall.
It's relatively small. The paperback, even.
I mean, I shop around too. Like I, well, I have bought into, I think bookkeeping is so good to me, because that sometimes I'll find, you know, some, some of the paperbacks are $17, but if you can get them used, they're $5.99 plus $2 shipping. And so I'll do like good time books too, you know, because that's how many they have, and then they're down putting, and, you know, everywhere. They're, they've been wonderful in terms of helping us save money and leaving us money to then get that new book that came out that the kids are going to be crazy about, so.
Thank you.
Are your periodicals, are they electronic, or are you still getting them?
So we have, we get three sections of Scholastic School that go for, for some of the kids that need the, and then we have also, then the other teachers share out the code, and so we just write on the back of those. So I, you know, I don't want to over-purchase, but like even with the New York Times Upfront, which we used at high school, I was getting a class set of 25, I found only one particular class was using it, and it's a reader class, so I was pulling back on how many I was ordering, but, yeah, and then, so that, but then that code is available to us, so if somebody else wants to hop on it, we, we are always shopping around, we're very thrifty.
I'm curious about the change in their grammar, was that about phonetics? Seems to me I just read something about going back to phonetics.
No, so I have four sons. I'm going to give this to you from the personal experience. My older three sons learned parts of speech, parts of the sentence, direct object, and when they were in elementary school. They learned those terms so that when they started writing and having conversations about why this was or wasn't a good sentence in seventh and eighth grade, they understood that, oh, the subject is not right, or I don't have a verb, right, or I don't have a predicate. They no longer do that kind of learning at the elementary school. They use Lucy Cocklin's, and they moved away from direct instruction in grammar. There's great things about that, because kids will write maybe more freely, you know, there's, there's pros and cons. The con is that kids are coming in and they're not, they don't always punctuate a sentence correctly, because they're getting words out there, they're getting ideas out there, but they're not conforming to conventions. And so as we've done data dives, we've found this is an area where our students are struggling, especially as they move up, and the expectations for stronger, being able to use a colon and a semicolon. If they're having trouble putting where the period is, you're going to, it's a long, it's a long road to the semicolon and colon. So we, we really, we're, we're, it's a struggle.
I don't know how many adults know how to use a semicolon.
I know, but the SAT asks for it, and I, and it still makes me crazy, because I, I, you know, I, sometimes I'll be adjuncting and hiring at UConn or Eastern. I'll look, I'll say, oh, they put the semicolon in the wrong place, and I have to put the little rule in. But the SAT asks, and those are the kinds of questions that our kids are missing. They're not, most of them aren't missing by the time they're in 11th grade, they're not missing simple things. Even our eighth graders are usually doing fairly decently on the grammar part, but once those more complex expressions come up, they, they struggle. And we want them to be, we want them to be competent, not just know how to do it on a test, we want them to be competent.
Yeah, it's just a, it's a hard balance. I should probably pioneer the get them writing, because the grammar made them hate writing.
Right.
And so it's made it a motivational factor, and once you lose them, motivationally, you can't.
Right, right, although it's so funny, so my very, you know, non-Englishy seventh grader, one of our wonderful English teachers in the inquiry, Lois Donato, has been finding ways to have them engage with grammar. So like, here's the rule, here's the wording, and then she'll give them like a joke paragraph that they have to edit. So finding creative ways to engage them, again, back to that engagement, finding creative ways to engage them. And it's, oh boy, it can, we're not pulling up the Warner's book, and like, I remember how many, just, one teacher was, all we did was Warner's. I mean, talk about crushing someone's soul, really. But, you know, it definitely is, and part of our, our department, we sort of laid out this as a goal. This, we're in the research quarter, but this is our time when we're really looking at what's the best way to do it, given the fact. We, we know that learning in their own writing is really the best way for them to learn how to utilize grammar. But if they don't have the language of the discipline, then they can't do that. So how do we make sure they have enough of the rules, and also feel free to, to write and to learn how to do those things, apply them in their own writing? But yeah, it's a struggle, it's real.
So when it comes to your books, it sounds like, what's the percentage of kind of new books that you get versus you're scrambling around getting the clean downs?
So, the, the, oh, I always try, well, so the library knows titles that we're looking for. So for example, we teach the kite runner in Contempt, some of the teachers can relate. And we order enough for the two class sets, but then the third class ends up running at the same semester. So I want to make sure I have enough, but honestly, we will, there's like a box.
Now, I could, and you were pitching Richmond's library for your media reading.
Yeah, no, they've actually, more so last year, we were getting so many from Douglas now. But I, they have a list of Liza Esco, who teaches at E.O. Smith, but who is on the Friends of Douglas side where she and I communicate. So when there's, when there's a book that I'm looking for, I'll send it out, hey, have you seen any copies of this?
Yeah, my concern is whether you have a food balance, whether you can get the new, you know, the latest and the greatest.
Yeah.
They're engaging, do you have enough budget money to do that?
Absolutely. I know, I mean, we always talk about this when we're planning, because you're, you're planning for what you know, and then things change. But I feel like we've been fortunate, we've had to move some money from one account to another, and so going through that helps us. And then we just were able to get The Beekeeper of Eleco, which is a relatively, you read that? Yeah, relatively new book, and I'm guessing you guys, seems like you're really, yeah. And very, very new. So, yeah, we've been really fortunate because of the flexibility to move between accounts. We had some title money that covered one of our textbook purchases for, for media reading, and then that money was able to be available for things we couldn't plan for, like this kind of book.
Great job, I'm, I'm very happy to hear all the wonderful things that, you know, your staff is doing to Meg. And, you know, I love reading The Ramblers, you know, it's great, it's electronic version, I really appreciate that. It sounds like we're doing really good things with, versus, you know, the paperbacks and the hard, hard copy versus online, which I'm very thrilled to hear, because I'd rather see us continuing that, me personally, on the textbook and paperback versions versus the online.
We're, we're lucky because small, shorter pieces will be out in PDF, and we can make those available to students who are, I'm not going to have to, I don't have to go out and buy a letter from Birmingham J.L. We can get a PDF one, and we try to pair, because of the way the SAT is set up, we try to pair things from other disciplines, even with our fiction. So there's lots of things that are available to us online, we're always looking for things like that. But we know when we need a book, we need a book, and we go out and get.
Any other questions?
No questions, but you guys are doing a great job. And actually, one small question, I guess. I know they use Google Classroom a lot, and just from personal experience, watching editing is such a skill, like going through your work and seeing mistakes. Do you find that supportive, because I know they kind of edit each other's stuff.
Oh, yeah.
It's beneficial.
Yeah, it's wonderful. Today, just today in class, we did a peer editing, and they could share out their piece, and then that person could make, instead of going in and just editing it, they click on something that says edits become suggestions. So they're not fixing their peers' work, they're showing what they would do, and then that peer can go in and see, oh, I messed that up. Or no, I wanted it to be that way. They can accept the suggestion, or they can reject it. Yeah, that's happening. And it happens with us too, as teachers, we, we'll have students hand in, just give me one paragraph, I want to see if you're on track. And then we can hop in the paragraph and do the same thing. It's good for continuous feedback as well.
I forgot when the counselors came up, but the eighth grade presentation that you guys did was awesome. I remember size growing here, it was.
Oh, thank you. We did pull that off of the public, the public view of that, since they'd say, what kind of lunatic is putting size?
I got it, that one book, yeah, I thought it was a good reference. I just, a couple of things, I can't see the, the things that you're talking about are actually happening. We're doing workshops on direct object and indirect object, and I do see the writing also in social studies and other subjects, so. I'm happy to be able to validate what you're saying, and I can see that writing embedded in the classes that I've always taken. The, the AP Capstone, do you have to take something early on? Like is there a pathway to taking it, like if you don't take honors in ninth grade?
You can take nothing AP ever, except the AP Seminar class, because you all know how to do research. You ca, if you want to take the research class. You ca, if you want to take the research class, that sort of thesis class, you have to take the seminar, but the really wonderful thing, this is my opportunity to talk with West Hartford, which is really helpful, because I envisioned it, just AP kids, be doing it just to get the AP to, no, it's not that, it's students who want to learn something and are passionate, but need to know, how do I analyze this source? How do I vet this source? How do I know, how do I understand bias in a source? This class, the seminar at West Hartford, he said about forty students will take seminar, maybe fifteen will do the research and then fifteen can get that capstone diploma, but it's really about building those skills and allowing them to feed their curiosity as well. So I think, I think this, so we'll be offering it for this first time, I just sat with one of the guidance counselors today to see, you know, what's, we have a mix of students, ninth grade are going, incoming tenth, incoming eleventh, incoming twelfth. So it's actually going to be a, a mix of ages, um, as well, which is really awesome for the learning experience as well. So now, if they take four AP classes and they get a passing grade on those four and they do the seminar and the research, then they can get the AP capstone diploma, they'll graduate with that. Um, if they just do the seminar and research class, they can get the AP capstone certificate. Um, both are acknowledged by over three hundred and twenty-four colleges, including MIT, Yale, Princeton, I mean, it's, um, and a lot of the colleges give credit, also college credit for the AP if you pass, um, you know, the, the test and the, um, first performance evaluations as well.
I'd love to know some of the new books that the kids are reading, just looked up, oh, that you had.
Yeah, I know you were going for.
You guys put out, but I always, I've read a couple, um, that you and Megan posted just to keep up, that feminist and, I really liked that, Meg, sorry. But, um, uh, it's interesting to know what you guys are recommending for the kids because, you know, I'm sure many of the adults are interested in it.
We could put something in the Rambler about that actually.
Yeah, that would be great.
You know, new books that we're acquiring, we really tried to, um, Penny Briskill, our vice principal, um, during her PhD work, did a, an assessment of, you know, asked me for all the books in the, in the book room and who the authors were and we did a breakdown of how many white males, how many females, how many of American, you know, how many, and we were, we were very white and very male. And so, um, we, we don't have the most diverse population, but our children are graduating into a world of diverse populations and so we have a responsibility to expose them to what other lives are like, you know, the worlds are like, so, um, and literature's a wonderful way to do that. Thank you.
I will say that your English program, the writing program in general is excellent round. Both my girls, as you know, have been gone for quite a while and, um, when they were in college, uh, writing was very, very easy for them, that you guys prepared them so well, um, and just everything they did, writing, one of my, my older daughter does writes for a living, so, um, you know, it's fantastic, we're doing a really, really good job.
It's, it's unfortunate because the SAT doesn't really make, we don't have a test that measures the writing. We do it within, parents can click on a, on a, a big, uh, writing assignment and see a lot of this, we put in standard scores from our writing rubric. So we can gauge growth that way, but there's no one test that says, oh my gosh. But what the kids come back on the, the days that they're, um, you know, speaking to their younger peers and they, you know, six out of seven say, I really knew how to write and people knew how to write when they got to college, so.
Oh, yeah, I mean, I remember dreading having to write papers and, you know, my girls would say, oh, I've got a ten-page paper and they whipped that out in no time.
Yeah.
My, my reaction, but, um, I did have a question about the, the grammar, are all the schools, um, following the same kind of path to grammar?
I believe so.
And has, have you tried to communicate back then?
That's, yeah, that's actually my next, I, I, when my son was in the elementary school, I did have some conversations with the sixth grade team professionally, you know, um, just to find out, you know, what are you doing? Um, last year we had, um, Tiffany Smith, who was working at Eastcon at the time, who was working on technology in our building, but also was an expert in literacy and knew a lot about Lucy Cockings and so I was taking it because that was what they were using. Um, so, yeah, I mean, that's, that's another layer of this, you know, what exactly you're doing, what, I mean, I had people express frustration to me from those, you know, that school about sort of like where they felt there were gaps and they were frustrated about it too, but it, it's always a balance, you know, are we getting them to write more? Are we getting them to engage more? Are they less nervous about writing and is that, it, it just might, it just might be we have to change what we're doing, which is what we're addressing now, but it's definitely something, we like to get the, um, the seventh grade teachers together with the sixth grade teachers in the spring, so it's a sort of a next step, but, um, it's just another thing that we definitely need to look at.
Yeah, in terms of books, um, if you have, I know if you have electronic, like the eBooks or even the audiobooks, you can transfer them to others. Have you thought of asking people to do that?
We do, so we, actually, some teachers will use audiobooks for certain students, whether it's because they have a modification or IP or, um, if the student's had a concussion, we'll say, let's get something. Um, on, in terms of on the tablets, um, they're great for pleasure reading, the kind of reading we're asking them to do are often asking them to put a sticky note in something or, and then if you're loading up, um, something on a Kindle and then the next period somebody's going to use the Kindle and you're, it's, it doesn't work for the kind of analysis that we're doing. Um, we definitely try to do as much as we can if it fits the purpose of, you know.
So you're getting hard copies then?
Yeah.
Okay. Oh, I thought you said you had kind of electronic books.
I mean, we can, we will occasionally grab PDFs of material, sometimes we might grab some things, so I don't know, Meg, during the inquiry, the kids could choose to do any myths so they can find things online and research those online, so. I mean, the internet's amazing, there's so many things you can find. For the kind of in-depth analysis that we ask them to do when they're reading, the paper copy allows them to mark a page, I let them take a little pencil and a little underline.
I thought some of the e-readers allow you to get markup.
Well, they will, but they're not taking the e-reader with, with them home, that e-reader is staying in the classroom so that the next class section might be able to use it, so then you have multiple people using the same e-reader and then that creates good usage.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, I'll just one, one thing, you might want to reach out, I don't know, FPS still exists, future problem solvers?
Yeah, yeah.
Because they do research and writing.
Yeah, sure, I, I, yeah.
And they have a lot of fun, they might be very much interested in the AP capstone.
Yeah, I think some of the kids that were involved in Sherry's program in Hebrew and I think that some of them are leaning in that course.
Okay.
Yeah.
My daughter did it, I was, she had no idea she was doing research and writing term papers.
Yeah.
She was like, it's just fun.
Yeah.
We applaud those.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone, I'm Jennifer Stavodia, the social studies coordinator. If I could convey what Mary Rose was saying, thank you so much for the opportunity for us to highlight the wonderful thing, uh, things our department is doing for our students. Um, this year we do have some goals, um, we want to continue to utilize diverse instructional resources, we're incredibly grateful for the one-to-one computing and the technological access we have in our building and finding that if particular sites or access to things aren't available, our director of technology has been really helpful in making that accessible to us. We've moved pretty much away from textbook usage with the exception of our AP courses, so it's very, very important for us to have access to, um, technology resources. And, um, as far as, um, including additional sources, we did ask in our budget for some technology, um, wireless mouses, we've incorporated Google drawings into some of our programming and so, um, the Chromebooks are kind of small and that's been moved to the technology budget, so, um, I'm grateful that we're able to get that. Um, we want to continue to support diverse career interests, partnerships with community, state or private industry, try to get folks into our classroom, whether it's counselors from private practice, talking to our psychology students or lawyers in our inter law, police officers in our criminal justice program. Um, so we're, we recently had a lawyer come to our mock trial after school, which two of our social studies teachers, um, are in charge of and it was very helpful for the students to have an opportunity to ask questions to, um, real lawyers. And of course, they get the opportunity to become lawyers in their, um, mock trial and our varsity team did pretty well recently. Um, we want to continue to explore opportunities outside the advanced placement realm to earn college credit. Um, as Mary Rose mentioned, the, um, community college aspect for our criminal justice is, potentially no longer, is no longer an option, so Sam Schadl is going to be working with us to help us continue to be able to offer college credit for, um, some of our courses. Um, similarly to what, um, Mary Rose said, we are really hoping to collaborate with our elementary schools for our incoming sixth grader, or incoming seventh graders, we're finding that, um, all of the districts are in different facets of the scope and sequence for social studies, so it would be really helpful for us to have a good sense of where folks are in their districts, but also give an idea of which skills they're honing in on. Um, and we feel that this will save some time in the beginning of the year with our early assessments, if we have just a general or broad overview of where our kids are coming in. Um, a few years ago, we did manage to kind of collaborate and we're finding that all of the districts were in different areas of the scope and sequence and some had social studies, you know, every other day, some had it every day and so it would be nice to have that opportunity to really get a sense of where these sixth graders are when they're coming in, so we can really hone in on some of those areas. Um, we're hoping to maintain high interest elective offerings with the transition to the humanities piece, we're getting, you know, fairly confident that a lot of our students are going to continue to take the social science classes, um, to fill that particular aspect, so we want to maintain our electives, but also provide a forum for kids to explore other areas. So we're always thinking about different elective offerings that we can offer our students. Um, and lastly, we want to develop and support skills to build upon our social studies department goal, which aligns with the school goal of increasing our SAT scores. We're focusing on, um, increasing student achievement and logical reasoning by way of various SAT skills and we're really focusing on them. We have a number of, of, um, social studies related skills that we embed into our activities and into our assignments, but we're finding that logical reasoning really is broad and encompasses a lot and we can, um, especially in our ninth and tenth grade classes, really build in a lot of the major areas of the ELA portion of the test. So, um, the skill, the content is still incredibly important for helping students convey their understanding of the skills, but we really have tried to support that in ninth and tenth at the high school and very much so in seventh and eighth grade, especially now that we're offering the, um, PSATs in grade eight. Um, so as far as tracking our goals, what I've asked the teachers to do is each quarter, identify the number of opportunities, students have the opportunity to engage in the SAT-related areas and then when we meet at the end of the year, get a sense of where kids are. So I should be able to say, well, at the end of grade seven, the seventh grade students have been doing very well in words and context, but they really could still use some work or support in problem solving and analysis. So then our eighth grade teachers, as they're building their lessons, will have a kind of, I mean, it's not the most perfect data, it's not the most concise data, but it's what we have that we're working with. Um, and so it's been, I'm, I'm confident that it's going to help us as we continue to build their capacity in these areas as we assess them more with PSATs, um, that we're going to start to see even more improvement and hopefully also continue to support the school goal. Um, and we're providing opportunities to increase it in the various different, you know, analysis of various mediums, whether it's, um, picto, pictorals, political cartoons, primary source documents from the various different time periods, um, secondary, tertiary documents and, um, students are doing a good job. We don't use, actually don't use Khan Academy as much in our department, to be perfectly honest with you, I found that a lot of the Khan Academy resources and the articles did not maintain the standards of rigor we're already giving our kids in the readings that we're doing it. I found that when I was looking, as we created SAT and aligned assignments, that I couldn't just print out a article from Khan Academy because I felt that the writing was actually kind of poor and incredibly casual, not what we would want our students to write with. And I found that as I was trying to like utilize some of those resources, I was basically re-typing and modifying the document to put in the vocabulary that I know they're capable of doing it, the, you know, they're just, I mean, we use larger vocabulary and we use them in context, so the kids in turn can use them in context in real life. Um, and so Khan Academy hasn't been as helpful, but we're grateful that the internet super highway has so many different lanes and we're, um, able to access and utilize lots of sources. And, um, Library Congress has been wonderful in their efforts to put so much out there with the, um, SAT focusing on like some of the founding documents, but then also the secondary documents. We're finding that our, um, social science classes have been very helpful, a lot of them are, um, sociological related and so we do have a sociology course at the high school and most of our electives, all of their resources, um, are not from textbooks, rather they're from other articles, court cases, et cetera. Um, so we feel that our particular curriculum and the trajectory where we want to see our department go is really a great opportunity to support, um, our students and, and their capacity, not just with SAT, but also in everyday life. Like we're teaching them their critical thinking and analysis skills, but we're also, um, teaching them how to write, but also to collaborate, collaborate and, and actually engage in discourse. So whether they're going on to secondary education and going to college, or if they're literally just going to work in a job, um, they're going to have to talk to the public, they're going to have to, you know, explain their positioning, you know, I'm sorry, we can't offer you this item for free, or whatever the case may be, but we want them to do it in, um, in a way that conveys that they, they've done their research and they're prepared to answer that. So I'm, I'm very grateful for the hard work that my department has, um, done in this capacity. As far as budget requests, it's a short, small one this year, um, we are not asking for, um, textbooks, we only ever ask for them for AP anyway. Um, we're looking to defray some transportation costs for curricular-based field trips, um, we're considering, um, a field trip to the Edward Kennedy Senate Institute, um, so we're hoping to, um, get some transportation costs for that. Our prison field trip is no longer subsidized until the students do pay for that, um, because do that, it's an integral part of our criminal justice class, everybody wants to go to jail and so, you know, don't wear underliar, don't bring a hoodie, you know what I mean? And, um, but they really enjoy that field trip, so it would be nice if we could defray some of those costs and then also for some of our grade eight inquiry, they do lots of projects and they get into the P D and stuff like that, so if we could just even the busing and so forth, it would be really nice if the kids could use this as part of their curriculum, but not have to pay. Um, and we're not asking for the whole amount, just, I mean, unfortunately, um, the Edward Kennedy Institute, the busing for that would be a little costly, so we didn't have to put so much of that on the kids, but also give them an opportunity to engage in a really great field trip, that would be wonderful. Um, we are asking for a very small amount of money to attend some professional, um, conferences for the, uh, some of our psychology teachers, but we also have a handful of teachers that like to go to the social studies, Connecticut Social Studies Conference, um, in October. And so, you know, it's a great way to get free samples of textbooks and see what's going on, so it would be nice if we could always, um, have that. And, um, Dr. Lo has been very receptive to that, so we're grateful. Um, we're also looking to update and revise a little bit of our curriculum, um, child and adolescent psychology, we've been offering it for the last, um, two, three years and it's been a very, very popular class, but we're finding that students are actually curious and they want more, so we're going to transition that to a developmental psychology course, which will take them beyond adolescents into, um, their teenage years and it's said that in some cases, people aren't really adults until their mid twenties, so it gives students an opportunity to see that trajectory of brain growth, but also the decline in growth, um, there's been lots of studies on Alzheimer's and we have kids that are really interested. We have a lot of students in our building who are interested in the medical field and so our developmental psychology class, our abnormal psychology, regular psychology, really provide a great start for students to build in, um, some of that into their coursework and also support their areas of interest as well. Um, and we're also considering a Twenty First Century Citizen, we were grateful to get the approval for that course last year, unfortunately it was not able to run, there was some hits in its presentation in, um, Power School, but it's, it's now ready and available. And so if we have enough student enrollment, we're considering writing it as a service learning curriculum, it would satisfy a humanities credit if they wanted, but it also could be part of the graduation service learning if they wanted to do that as well, um, or apply it there. So we just have to kind of see, you know, what the state would specifically require to, to justify it in that, um, context. And lastly, instructional resources to maintain some of our existing program needs, supplemental text, source books, faculty subscriptions, um, so the, uh, subscription to the American Psychological Association and the ASA Sociological Association has been very helpful in us in accessing articles that are scientific based, but we also know they're proofed by that, so we're not just providing our students with. but we also know they're proofed by that. So we're not just providing our students with someone's blog. Not that that's always awful, but you know, it's nice to have that. But it also gives us access to materials at a reduced cost as well. And then as far as supplemental texts for a lot of our teachers who, there's some teachers who teach multiple different crafts, up to five, six crafts in some cases. And so it's nice to be able to buy them a couple of extra used textbooks at, you know, five, $10 a pop, just so they, because they're not using our old straight textbooks, just so that they can, I'm excited as that kid. Just so that they can just kind of refresh their own knowledge to it. And it's nice, I mean, at $5, it's not asking a lot. But if it gives them access to, you know, Western European primary sources that they can use, I'd like to be able to offer that. And some of our documentaries, not all of them are available online, frontline. And PBS is one that we do like to use for whatever reason. Some of them are a little costly. So if we can access some of those once in a great while, that would be nice. But for the most part, we're pretty efficient. We utilize the internet a great deal. We really don't have a choice. Everything is available to us. And to support students of all learning needs, we always, anything we use on the internet, we always, you know, either modify or adapt to support the grade level, the needs of the students. And people in the department have done a really good job with that. And so just some of the highlights, we've been able to add nine electives in the last five years. All of them continue to run. So we're grateful for that. AP course enrollment remains steady and more diverse. Mary Rose mentioned with the AP capstone. We're finding with our AP government and politics class that it's one of those courses where if students hadn't taken an AP course before, it's one that they could probably be very successful in. And so we're starting to see enrollment there. Our AP psych class is also one of those classes where we have a diverse group of students in it. So it's really nice to see some of our kids going out of their comfort zone and really taking out a challenge. And our teachers do incredible amount of work with that. We have been a very, very collaborative department. We work together constantly on our resources. We're vetting together. We have shared drives. You know, we're trying to foster equality amongst our classes. So what's going on in Level One, Grade Nine Global and my class, it's going on in another class. So that students are having continuous equitable access. Now, the delivery of it may be different. We want teachers to have the autonomy to deliver in what they feel is the most appropriate. But we do feel it's important that all of our students have similar access and that we are fostering and encouraging those skills. And you can see the countless hours running various extracurricular activities between our seventh and 12th grade teachers. I'm still amazed at what our inquiry program is doing in the middle school and all of the real world learning experiences our kids are getting. And while I understand social studies isn't always that sort of technical discipline that you would expect. For us, the technical piece or those hard skills, if you will, are their actual writing, their capacity to articulate clearly and definitively, which is really important to us. And then the soft skills piece is their capacity to collaborate, articulate verbally what they're feeling, their sentiment, their opinions, beliefs, et cetera. And so I think our teachers are doing a really remarkable job. So I'm very proud to be part of this department and very proud to work with the teachers that I work with. And these are just some pictures of different things that we take part in, in our department. Questions? David, let's talk to you.
I noticed your, one of your last slides is that you have cooperating teachers from Eastern. Do you use them from any other schools?
We've had students, teachers or teachers come in from UConn, Eastern and Sacred Heart. Right now, we do have a student teacher from ACSU working in our grade eight inquiry team right now. It's really just, usually we get some last minute scrambling from the colleges at the end of the summer. Can we place this student? We do have another ECSU student up at the high school who is observing some of our American history classes. He's in a very infancy stage of his program, so.
Now, I've also requested you had in there, you were only asking for $350 extra?
Yeah, we're just, we're just looking for maintaining our program and really instructional supplies. Honestly, if we could just make sure our technology infrastructure is up there, that we can do our job effectively, to be honest with you.
Didn't seem like a lot.
No, wait till next year. We're a little A P U S. But as of right now, really, I just, I just want to get used books for the teachers, the big post-its that Mary Rose had mentioned. We really enjoy using those in the class. My wireless masks are going to get purchased through technology. And that was a couple hundred dollars, I think. So some of my original budget was a little bit higher, not much, but we were able, the libraries picked up some of our, like, we get The Economist, we get Foreign Policy, we get History Magazine. And so our librarian is able to get that for us. So we're very grateful to be able to still bring that into the classroom. So those are overpriced subscriptions, but they're awesome.
Yeah.
I know you're budgeting very quickly. How much would it cost to actually fund the field trip? How much are kids paying? Remember the busing for the Edward Kennedy?
It was going to be in the neighborhood of, I, it was several months ago that I looked into it, but it was around a thousand dollars, I think, for the bus.
So we had to get a coach bus to do it.
Yeah, because it's out of state.
So that's the one. The prison is regular school bus, you know, but the kids still pay about $20, I think, to go to jail. Which in hindsight is probably a lot less than if they had to really stay. Gear straight doesn't work anymore. Sounds like a binocular game. I'm happy to hear all the departments speak about the new SAT crap.
Is this in the budget, her request? True.
It's what?
It's what we, it's in the budget. Okay.
I believe we asked for their technology, like, half the cost of that. So just so the kids didn't have to pay the full price to go for the day. Because a lot of those same kids are the kids who pay for the UN trip to New York City, which is a little costly too. The mock trial dues and then the student dues just to be in the clubs. So we try to kind of defray areas that we can.
You mentioned professional development. Is that in the different section of the budget? Okay, so it's not in yours.
No, but they don't write any professional development articles. They're not, they're line items, they're not. And we're just looking for, these are semester courses. So the developmental psychology is not like a full rewrite. It's a curriculum revision to be able to add the additional units. And the half semester of the 21st century would just be a new course for a half semester, whatever the curricular hours allocated for that would be. I'm not really sure, to be honest.
Sounds like you do great stuff at a very high level, the two journals that you mentioned. Was it Foreign Affairs and?
Foreign Policy, use The Economist. To me, honestly, they're great as like supplemental and the kids are really interested. But like The Economist, the articles and readings are actually quite short. And so we do have to continue to supplement as well. But for our global studies class, just having access to that, because we are literally all over the globe, it's really nice to see, you know, we just got one recently on India and we'll be there in a couple weeks. We do South Asia, so just background information for teachers as well is very helpful.
Being, and I also just want to say that all these clubs that you're supporting is really, really good.
Yeah, they're amazing.
For some students, that's make or break, you know, that's what anchors them and keeps them motivated.
Well, it's really nice because we have some of those students in our class that could do the mock trial. And they don't say who in class, they're very shy, but yet they'll be able to go and to court on these field trips and argue, you know, regardless of where they are. So it's really nice to see them come out of their comfort zone or when they're at the UN and whatever delegation they're with. It is nice. So we're grateful that, you know, and it gets, it attracts kids from all areas. The sports kid, the one who is just, you know, hanging out.
Great job, Jen. It just reminded me of, the extracurriculars are great. And just reminded me a quick question for the administration. Is the Ram Education Foundation, is that now a fund?
It is, yeah. What they've decided to do is to disperse the funding they have as scholarships again this year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Julia Holander, Department Coordinator of Health and Physical Education. I am, maybe this is my first year, so my speech might be a little bit shorter than everyone else's. I'm learning along the way, so I'm actually the new department coordinator that teaches at the middle school. I first would like to, once again, tag on with everyone else and thank you for taking the time to listen to me speak tonight. And I would like to just touch upon some of our goals that we focused on. This is a little bit different than you're printed out, but we do stress metacognition, having students really understand the concept. And we do this through self-advocacy with student choice. So we really stress having them make their own decision based on wellness. And through that, we stress individual improvement and reflection on that improvement and then self-awareness of what they can do moving forward. We, I will discuss more and give you some examples of what I mean. But throughout the curriculum, we, in our individual classes, we really have them focused on setting personal goals and then giving them the tools, the resources that they need to move forward. And then taking a look at the end and looking at their progress along the way. For example, right now I'm thinking of their physical fitness scores, putting data and data collection sheet on the classroom. And then really evaluating their progress and then figuring out what they need to do to move forward after they leave us, what can they do to continue improving. Some of the things that we're requesting, we're not requesting a whole lot, but basically with curriculum, we do have some curriculum that's older than five years old. So we're really stressing social emotional learning strategies within the classroom. And we focus in on the growth mindset theory. So that really helps them understand that individual improvement, once again, is most important and how are they going to get there? How are they going to grow? So we're really looking at tying the social emotional learning strategies with the current health standards. Within some of our new curriculum writing, there is a health and new health framework that came out that does tie social emotional learning with the current standards that are out there. That it's just more up to date and current with what we are trying to drive for our students and do within our program. Our first, or excuse me, our CBR certification has been really popular and we like to continue offering that. So all the freshmen going through, they get the opportunity to have the skills needed to perform CBR. And they can then decide if they want to get that certification and then put it on their resume or use it, you know, of course, when needed after or during, you know, their time with us and or, you know, summer job between hand or just a renewal. And then currently, I do have to say we're very grateful for what we have in our weight room. We've replaced a lot of the different pieces of equipment that were old that needed to be replaced. Not only for safety reasons, but just because the space in there is limited. So we're really trying to streamline the space, the equipment. So we have maybe less equipment with more exercises they can do on the different pieces of equipment. Once again, the space is not that large. So with safety reasons, we really need to look at not only maintaining, but in the future, also streamlining it a little bit, getting rid of some of the bulkier equipment. That's not in the budget, but that's just something that we're thinking about moving forward. But really just maintaining what we have. And then once again, offering, continuing to offer the wide variety of activities that we're able to offer for our students, just preventative maintenance and replacing the current equipment that, you know, just wear and tear of daily use with all our students need to be replaced. So going back to the freshmen taking the CBR course, pretty much everyone does decide to get that certification. Kind of a no brainer if you're taking it, why not? And so the students are lucky that our program offers to pay for that certification. Along with CBR, some of the other things that we focus in on, something new that we want to bring into our curriculum is talking about food allergy awareness and how it can affect not only the body, but the mind and different foods that we eat. We also will continue to talk about safe social media as we know that, you know, the media is a major part of our students' lives. And then we will continue talking about substance abuse prevention, including alcohol, marijuana and tobacco, specifically vaping, as we know that that's an issue. And then talking about prevention of diseases, specifically HIV. Continuing along with just something that we're proud of is our physical fitness scores for the amount of students passing on all four tests. So we're above the state's average. And then we're also above the surrounding towns, towns near us, including Lassenberg. I didn't put that up there, but we are higher than some really outstanding schools that perform well in a lot of different athletics. And so it's nice to see that we are still above. What we do is we take their pre-test and we have them put it in this data collection form that's, you know, through technology on their Chromebook. And then they track their progress around, along the way. And then at the end, we take a look at their posts and we actually assess and we look at the percent change between pre and post-test. And they look at their growth. And we're not only looking for growth, but we're looking for mastery. And so most of the students do excel in both growth and mastery. Then nutrition and wellness is something that we are very proud of at the high school in terms of, it's a newer course that's very popular. It does, it's heavily project based. So once again, students will kind of talk to their instructor about personal goals and what they'd like to create as a project. It's like a hybrid class, so a lot of the activities in the classroom, but it's also in the gym. And so they kind of form their own projects. They do go on field trips, working with the community, really to understand maybe what they might be interested in in the future in terms of maybe even a career they've worked with, the preschool program. So it's a great class to really get an overall perspective on different aspects of wellness. And it can also fulfill the additional .5 health and safety credit for the graduation, the new graduation requirement. And then we do want to continue having guest speakers come into our school. We had a few come into our school this year, personal trainers that really helped our students understand different concepts of training and how they can do simple things at home to help benefit their physical needs. We are requesting and we're hoping to get a professional, someone from Project Adventure who specializes in social emotional learning to come in and to talk to our department about more things we can do, strategies we can do throughout our program that will help us with not only tying in our standards with social emotional learning, but just overall more knowledge with our whole schools, trying to gain more knowledge of different strategies that we can do to help with that concept. And so I think having someone come in and really speak for the day and have us. And so I think having someone come in and really speak for the day and have us demonstrate maybe go through some activities might really help us get a better understanding and transfer that to the students. That's all I have.
I have another question. Good job. I just have a question, yeah, just on the CBR. So you have an instructor that's trained for the children, so there's really no cost, right? You said there was some cost of...
Right.
It's free.
Just for us, for school, yeah.
Just for you, right? And the school picks up that cost, right?
Yeah.
All right. I noticed in the picture here, it was nice to look at these treadmills looking through clear glass.
The window replacement has been nice.
I do have a question about the CBR certification. Do you have enough instructors to do that, or are you the additional instructors? Have you, are you aware that a lot of the towns that are hard save towns also offer free or almost free training in that?
Yeah. I just, I think we see that they're more likely to do it if they're in the course and they have to learn it anyway.
No, yeah, I just didn't know if people were, because I hear we do it probably three or four times a year in Andover, we offer it.
Yeah, that's great.
And the other question I had is, what happened from eighth grade to tenth grade? Passing the, like, youth draw?
Yeah. You know, I don't, I'm not up there on a daily basis, so I don't know what they do, but maybe motivation could be a piece of it.
Okay. Wow, it seems surprising that. The state average went up slightly. Thank you.
Thank you very much. As we transition back to any of the department coordinators who are planning on saying evening or spine, you can certainly...
Transition as well.
All right, 11.2 review expenditures and revenue report, Eva?
Thank you very much. We really know that it's such a time to work on that, it's just a different format. So the one thing that you will recognize as going through this is that we're still in a net favorable position, estimating at $49,280. If you had a chance to look through the little handout that was handed to you, your reports are going to look slightly different, and your account structure codes are going to look...
This was, it was the, it was the handout that I provided to you in your package today. It was not sent to you, so if you're looking for the 11.2A, it was put down with your handouts from today. So I know you didn't have it ahead of time. I did let you know when we posted it, because of the new system, we needed a little bit more time. So that is, that's what, this is what Eva's reading from right now.
So on March 5th, you're going to have a finance subcommittee meeting that I'm going to be part of, and I'm going to help walk through the accounting structure and the reports so that you can have a better understanding of them. As you look through the reports on the BOE object summary, you'll notice that the chaperone, which is object 150, is over expended. That's just a timing of the transaction to take the money from the student activity fund to repay the general fund, because we pay out of the general fund. We just haven't had a chance to catch that up. And then object 210, which is your health insurance, it also appears that it's running over budget, but because we transitioned mid-year, the way that we encumbered and encumbered the vice for health insurance in the old system, we did a purchase order. In the new system, it's basically run through payroll, so they're actually trying to backdate six months' worth of transactions. That sort of is not working out, so it's mostly just a accounting issue or encumbrance issue. It's not, it's not really over. But as part of the packet, I did hand out, there is a sheet that we do the actual payments and the estimate what's left, and we are estimating that we'll have a net favorable position of $38,000 in our health insurance.
That was page Eva's, thank you. The additional, the additional addendum that Eva just referred to.
So capital improvement fund is running status quo in terms of we're just paying for work that's either been completed or making partial payments on work. Likewise, we're waiting for the February 28th payment for our excess cost funding, and at the moment, it seems like we're anticipating higher than what we budgeted for. But I also caution, do some caution there, because March 1st is the second filing date for excess costs, and that's when the larger cities usually put in most of their need, and so that might reduce what they're anticipating to give us. But if you have any other questions or any questions, I'd be glad to answer them at the moment.
So on the first one, any idea of what some of the contributing factors are for the, why we're not, are we $50,000?
So in, in previous years, the way that budgeting was done, grant-funded expenditures were put into the budget, and then when the grant was approved, they were taken out, so you were left with a credit, in essence, in your general operating. I prefer to go with the rule of you should support, not supplement. So when budgeting, I take grant expenditures out, and then you're left with just the tax base expenditures. So if they were to come in to do an audit or IDA or any other federal funded grant, they can see the clear diluteration of what is a grant expenditure is a locally funded expenditure.
You were here last year though, right?
I did, I did.
You did not? Okay, so it's basically because of grants, and that's how we, we put that in as far as revenue? The other question I had about the insurance, I'm not, I don't understand the $38,000 favorable position.
So basically what happens is we get charged, because as you may or may not, I don't remember if you were in the last board meeting or not.
I was not. When you had the insurance someone come in, yeah, I was not.
So we're self-funded insurance, so we get, we pay out what our claims experience is. So whatever the claims hit in July, that's what this dollar amount represents. So when we budget, we budget based on the estimation of what our consultant provides to us, and we break out per month, so we take 12 months, divide that amount by 12 months, and we keep a steady flow going, so that's what the estimated payments are of the 227 on page eight. When you take that, excuse me, when you take that, the ebb and flow, people come on our plan because of life events, people go off our plan because of life events. So it's just ebb and flow based in a, in a self-insurance environment, so that, that's why there's, there's, we might have projected savings.
But this is not a projected savings for Ram, this is a projected savings for the...
This is just Ram.
This is, this is Ram?
Yeah.
So this is...
So each individual entity is part of the consortium, pays their own bills.
Yep.
So we, we put the money, we get the bill from Spring Root and Anthem, and we put the money into our account that I believe the town of Marlborough oversees on behalf of the consortium, and then the money gets drawn from there from Anthem, goes indirectly and draws out that.
But this money is not a, money that's available to us for anything, it's just really you only need to use for expenditures and insurance. So everybody knows that. And the last thing I had was on page, I guess it's page nine, BOE revenue, gate receipts. My only question is, are we doing everything possible to collect gate receipts? Meaning, I know a couple of years ago, I proposed that we started changing how we collect for games as far as JV versus varsity, is that still, I haven't been to a game, so I'm just asking, is that still in place?
So it's my understanding that there's lots of competition for gate receipts, and there's an organization that does like the dance ticket sales.
Ram, the Ram sports boosters?
Probably. And so there, that seems to cut into the gate receipts, so that's why you're noticing at the time. I could do a better, more in-depth review as to see how many people actually do come through the door and utilize the pre-bought versus paying at the door.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that we are, we're capturing what we set out to do a couple of years ago, and that's still continuing, so that's it, thank you.
Any other questions? 11.3, okay, so on 11.3, this is an annual renewal of the Healthy Food Certification. If we would like to participate and receive the funding from the Healthy Food Certification, we have to, the board has to enter into these, these, what do we call these things?
Motion, thank you.
Are we skipping 11.2?
Oh, I'm sorry, BNC, sorry, BNC, so you have, usually there's no questions on those, sorry. So we have the Chartwell's expenditures, and we have student activity. So do you actually have any questions on those, because those were in your package?
We had, a few years ago, we had an issue with like one class that had money, that, well, they had money, but they didn't have money, has that been resolved?
I guess so, that was.
That was a while ago. That was like 20 years ago. I just saw the, I saw the class of upstairs, like...
Any other questions on these?
All right, so 11.3, okay, so we're looking for motions on whether or not the board would like to continue providing the healthy food option. The healthy food option provides us with some funding based on participation. So the motions have to be read in their totality. We sort of got Dain on that last year, so we can't be creative, they have to be read verbatim. And if you want to participate, then that would be lovely, and we keep the funding. If you don't want to participate, then you don't get any extra funding, that's the deal with us. So the food that can be served during the day has to meet the Connecticut Healthy Food Standards Act, which is more stringent than the federal government. If we, and then there's exemptions in part of this that for concessions, dance, and/or events, we would waive that. Otherwise, if you choose not to do it, then, like I said, there's no limitations on us, and we just don't get any additional funding.
So if we approve both of these motions, it keeps us doing what we've currently been doing? So on your agenda, there's two, there's 11.3 and 11.4, they each have the full recommendations on them that would need to be read.
So we have to read first motion, second...
Sure. We, I have a question.
Sure.
So how much is the funding?
I believe it's six cents.
I'm sorry?
It's an additional six cents per, per item sold. So not necessarily per item, I don't even know how to explain this. It's, it's an additional six cents worth of funding, so for lunch, for meals, federal funding for meals, and that's based, I believe, like 32 cents per meal sold. So this six cents, as long as it's a la carte and it's healthy, you get an additional six cents worth of meals. It's not much, but it ends up, adds up over the years.
They, they pay us an initial six cents. So do you have a number from last year? Were you doing this?
I could, I could write, I can...
Roughly, what, off your top?
No, not off the top of my head, no.
20 grand?
Probably less. All right.
I'd like to make a motion pursuant to CGS Section 1021, F5F Regional School District certifies that all food items offered for sale to students in the schools under its jurisdiction and not exempted from the Connecticut Nutrition Standards published by Connecticut State, page 3 of 6. Connecticut State Department of Education, Department of Education will comply with the Connecticut Nutrition Standards during the period of July 1st, 2020 through June 30th, 2021. This certification shall include all food offered for sale to students separately from reimbursable meals at all times from all sources, including but not limited to school stores, vending machines, school cafeterias, culinary programs, and any fundraising activities on school premises sponsored by the school or non-school organizations and groups.
Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor? 11 down four, discussion of possible action regarding food and beverage consumptions. Someone like to make a motion? Benny?
Is that me again?
I'd like to make a motion, regional school district will allow the sale to students of food items that do not meet the Connecticut Nutrition Standards and beverages not listed in Section 10-221Q of the Connecticut General Statutes provided that the following conditions are met. One, the sales in conjunction with an event occurring after the end of the regular school day or on the weekend. Two, the sales at the location of the event. And three, the food and beverage items are not sold from the vending machine or school store. An event is an occurrence that involves more than just a regularly scheduled practice meeting or extraprogrammed activity. For example, soccer games, school plays, and interscholastic debates are events, but not soccer practices, play rehearsals, and debate team meetings are not. The regular school day is the period from midnight before to 30 minutes after the end of the official school day, location means where the event is being held.
Thank you, Remy.
Thank you.
Any discussion?
Yes, so this means you cannot sell anything, say the band, the band boosters want to have enough, you know, sell candy outside the gymnasium, you can't sell this, right?
At 30 minutes.
It will allow.
It's got to be 30 minutes after the official school day, right?
It will allow the sale of foods that do not meet, so the candy wouldn't meet it, and we are allowing that during these times and at these locations.
And as long as it's an event.
Right.
All right, any other discussion items? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, 11 down five, there are no first read, reading the policies, moving to 11 down six, the second read of policies. Someone like to make a motion to adopt the policies as presented? I think Benny's done enough motions, does someone want to make one? Anyone?
I'll make a motion. Board of thousand policies, 4.118, 2, 4212, 2, 5510, 6111.
Any second, any discussion? All right, all those in favor? All right. Would you all mind if we just switched 11.8 to go first before 11.7? Anybody be opposed to that? Okay, so we'll do 11.8.
Right? We'd be here all day. We'd be here all day.
Good evening.
Who are you, sir?
I'm sorry, forgive me. In case anyone here doesn't know me, I'm Scott Lesley, the principal. I know that what I'm going to present now is probably not something that at least some people may want to hear, and it may not be the most popular thing I've ever presented. I'm hoping it's not as unpopular as the first time I proposed paper parking back a few years ago. But I, I know that this is the right time to be making this presentation, and this is a conversation that we all need to engage in for a lot of great reasons. So I'd like to walk you through what I'm proposing, and then what I'm hoping is, is that you'll consider a motion to finish this discussion. What I'm proposing is that we begin the process of choosing a new mascot. And I know that the board is engaged in conversation in the past regarding this, this particular topic, and at the time it didn't go over so well. Now I think we're, we're looking at a very, very different time, we're looking at very different situations. We can't ignore the fact that there have been a number of incidences in our state recently and across the nation that have really focused attention on the issue of Native American mascots, whether they be at the high school level, college level, or professional sports level, but particularly at the high school level. Most recently, I'm sure most of you are familiar with the situation in Killingley. In Killingley High School, there was a student-generated movement to change their mascot from the Killingley Redman, and the students were, received the approval of the board to move forward, and in doing so, they engaged the entire student body and by student vote changed the name to the Killingley Redhawks. That was approved by the board that a new board event, and I say new because this occurred after elections, revisited the issue and eventually reinstated the name Killingley Redman. Through that process, they received a great deal of feedback from Killingley students, and they received a great deal of feedback from tribal representatives in Connecticut who stressed how offensive a Native American mascot is to the tribal people locally in Connecticut. That really drew a great deal of attention to this area that I think up until this point hasn't, you know, not, well, Ram, we haven't had a real focus on our mascot for a number of years. Critically coming out of this is that the Mohegans, who have in the past allowed or at least accepted some of the Native American mascots. So for example, Monville are the Indians, and the Native American culture has allowed that because they, they recognized that it was done with the intent of honoring the Native American culture. I think in the past, we've always made the argument that Sachems was a respectful way of honoring the Native American culture. Following Killingley, they've changed their tune, and the Native American representatives have made it, in Connecticut, have made it very clear that they no longer support any Native American representation at the high school level for mascots and athletic teams. Right now, there is a proposed, there will be proposed legislation in Connecticut to ban the use of any Native American imagery or names for high school mascots. Right now, there are nineteen schools, including Ram, that would be impacted by this legislation. I'd like us to get ahead of that legislation. I don't want to see us change our mascot because somebody from the outside is telling us to do that. I think the time is right for us to change the mascot because it's the right thing to do. In terms of some specific incidences here at Ram, having the Sachem as our, as our mascot has created challenges for us for, for many years because we can't have a costume mascot at any of our games. Our students can't get behind a costumed animal mascot, a costumed pirate mascot, a costumed any mascot, we can't do that. So our, our athletic fans have a very interesting relationship with our mascot. Sachems can be spelled out in cheers, and one of the more visible representations is the tomahawk chop, which is used at professional games and it's been used at Ram games. This year, for the first time, at one of our volleyball competitions, we were at another school, and we were, as our students were asked by the host school to stop using the tomahawk chop. Our students did, they were highly respectful of that, but nonetheless, we have this year for the first time been told to cease and desist one of the activities kind of related to our Sachem mascot. I've been contacted by the Hartford Current, you may have seen an article following the Killingley situation where they interviewed principals from each of the nineteen schools. The Willamette Chronicle has reached out to us, you may have seen articles there, and the NAACP has reached out to us as well. They're actively engaging schools to try to get all of the schools without needing state legislative requirements to change the mascot. And Ram was cited in a Hartford Current op-ed piece for having a mascot. Now, this op-ed piece I thought was a very interesting take on it because they went and they looked at of the, all the nineteen schools that currently have Native American representations for their mascots and looked at their mission statements, their district mission statements. We were the first school cited in the op-ed piece, we were one of the only nineteen schools cited, and we were criticized for having a mascot that contradicts our district mission of creating and maintaining a safe, respectful, and positive environment. Great history, we haven't always been Sachems. When Ram was first created in 1957, we're the Ram Rams. Say that fast. We're the Ram Rams through 1961. The first mention we find of Sachem is in nineteen, the 1962 year, nineteen sixty-two we became the Sachems. Our first athletic director was very interested and enamored with Native American culture, and I am certain that the suggestion of, of changing us from Rams to the Sachems was done with all due respect at the time, and we have been Sachems since 1962. The, in 2014, this is the first effort in my tenure here at Ram, students did propose to the board that we change the mascot. This was the class of 2016 that had hoped to do something more than just search out a place to build your prom and do fundraisers that sell food that probably doesn't adhere to the safety requirement. They wanted to begin the discussion of changing the mascot. Some of you may have been on the board at the time, you may remember this discussion. It didn't last long. The students, and I, I pulled this, the quote, from the material that students had put together to show that what they're saying, what they're saying in 2014 isn't very different than what people are saying now, that it's time to change for a change of Ram around the country, high schools, universities, professional sports teams are making a change, they're swapping mascots depicting Native Americans, Native American tribes, and Native American stereotypes. The Sachem mascot is creating racist, objectifying, and insensitive. The discussion didn't go very well because there was a great deal of pushback from the community, and I think the students felt this isn't the time, and this isn't what we really thought we were getting into. We thought we were going to be engaging in a positive discussion, instead they felt like, and not necessarily with the board, but just with the community in large, so it wasn't well received, and so they did not pursue it. So my proposal, and if I could just, just add that I think, as I look around the room, I think I can be pretty assured that I am the longest-serving Sachem in the world, been a proud Sachem for over thirty years. And what I've discovered is that what I love so much about Ram isn't our mascot, it's our school, it's our students, it's our speakers, it's our teachers, it's the climate we create. What makes Ram so great isn't the fact that we have a Sachem as a mascot. What makes Ram so great are students, our parents, our teachers, it's the climate we've created, it's the school leaders, it's the Board of Education. Changing and adopting a new student-chosen mascot, I firmly believe will only have a positive impact on Ram High School. Because we'll move from a mascot that, although I think people have a fondness for, as I said earlier, students really can't get behind. It's not a mascot that we can parade on the basketball court floor, it's not one that we can bring out to a football game. If we were able to have a mascot that the students could fully get behind, that we could have a costumed character that students could cheer and have fun with, I think rather than taking a hit to our school spirit, I think it would do nothing but enhance and increase the spirit and give students something to gather around. I've talked to a lot of people about this. Every time I'm in a conversation and our, to a Board of Student Reps will be able to attest to this, I ask them, so what do you think about the mascot? And I can tell you that almost in a hundred percent of those conversations, the answer is, well, it would be kind of sad to see it go, but the time is right. And I, I've yet to have any conversations within the building where a student or an adult tells me, no, I'm a Sachem two and through, and this is outrageous, we can think of a change. The tenor, I think, has changed over the course of the years, and I think in particularly what's been happening recently, the feeling really is, it's time to turn the page, it's the right thing to do. What I'm suggesting is, what I'm doing tonight is informing you of the need to engage the community in choosing a new mascot. My request is that you support a motion authorizing Dr. Law and myself to initiate the process of choosing a new mascot. I'm not asking Dr. Law to make the choice, I'm not expecting to make the choice, this is for the students. It's the students that go crazy at games, it's the students that really get behind this, so this really needs to be a student-generated process. I'm just here asking to get it off your heads. Once, if, if in fact you give us this permission, our next step will be to inform teachers, staff, students, community members of the fact that we're beginning this process, and then to create a committee made of staff but in particular students. I mean, students are going to generate this. What I anticipate is that students will develop a list of proposed mascots, whittle that down, have a student vote to choose the new mascot, and then we would bring that to you as the Board of Education to make the final approval. Of course, it doesn't end there, we're going to have to ask the question of transitioning. When this happens, the budget will be hopefully long-approved and put to bed, so it's not realistic that I'm going to be coming in front of you and saying, thank you for approving our new mascot, now we're going to have to cough up the money to replace all of our uniforms and everything else that goes along with that. I don't see that as being a problem. I think what we're going to have to do after this process takes place is to develop a transition program. And I'm not suggesting, you know, we're not going to erase fifty years of Ram history. We'll have a transition program, we will have to have a uniform replacement process, we already have that in place, so it may be that there are uniforms that for a number of years may still have the Sachem name on them. I think it's unrealistic to expect that we're going to put out the amount of money necessary to make all those changes. The, the one change that is probably the first one that we'll need to confront is the fact that with the new road project school and sanding down the gym floors for the first time, we're going to have to figure out what goes in the circle, the center, what the court circle. Whether it stays blank until we figure out what the new mascot might be if it's not chosen by then, if it is chosen by then, we may be able to have a representation already to get painted in the center of the court, or we may decide to go with ER or the work way up. So that is a discussion that doesn't need to take place this evening certainly, but will have to take place before that process. Questions?
Can you hear from the students? What do you guys think? I mean, it's kind of embarrassing to have other schools, like other students saying that our mascot is offensive, it takes away from our students, it takes away from athletics and everything, and I think that there's, like, there is a lot of controversy, I've seen on Instagram and everything, a negative thing, there's just not like a reason to keep it, in my opinion. And like, I've talked to a lot of people, I don't know, like, a lot of my classes have been talking about it, and like, some people don't like understand like why you would have to change it, but I think that's also like, they don't know of like some of the things like that have happened.
Yeah, we just don't, like, I don't know, it's just embarrassing sometimes, we're not seeing, I don't know, if we're seeing it's something other than what our students are doing, then I think it's a problem.
Yeah, I mean, I'm a junior, I'll be back for next year, it's going to be really weird if next year we haven't a mascot, it's going to be real sad, but at the end of the day, I feel like it does need to happen, and a lot of students really don't care that much. They're, my, one of my classes had like a twenty-minute discussion about this, and nobody feels that the Sachems really a huge part of our identity because like at pep rallies, we don't have things that directly relate to it, like we have the Ram roller coaster and things like that that are more a part of our Ram identity, so the Sachem isn't really the most important thing. And a lot of people who do have strong opinions feel strongly that it doesn't need to change that much, seriously. So I think that's where a lot of students are at with it.
Also, I feel like even on the uniforms, a lot of them say Ram anyways, and I'm even Sachems, and like, I cheered and I like, it was, we were Ram, we weren't the Sachems.
Well, yeah, like, we're more Ram.
You know, and not having, just as you guys described, not having that mascot, physical mascot, has created some very bizarre situations over the years. So there was a couple of years when Blues Blues, you know that Blue Dog? That was our mascot, not for any other reason than the student who happened to wear it those couple of years happened to have the costume. We've had the Blue Body Suit person as kind of out there.
I think a lot of students think it would be really cool to have the ability to actually have it.
Yes.
Also, someone asked, like, someone has dressed up as a Sachem before, and we got in so much, like, the other teams were like giving us so much for it, like, I mean, it's, I don't know, it's kind of awkward, not pleasant, embarrassing.
Any other questions?
I would, I would just like to say that the, the Killingley issue was brought up, yeah, the election happened and it was brought up in the middle of a state championship run for the football team, which I think added to a lot of the, you know, overturning, and I think there was a lot of alumni and community reaction to that as well. So I don't know if there's a process, I, I think the students have the right, you know, frame of mind in this. I don't think we should have, you know, a, a gender or racial, race-related mascot, I, I don't think it's the way to go, but obviously there's history, there's been state championships, one. Interesting enough, if you go on CIAC, which I do a lot, they have mascots listed when you look at the tournament seedings and also the schools listed. you look at the tournament seedings and also the schools listed. And, you know, there are some pretty nice ones, and then there's ours, you know, which is kind of, you know, not great to look at. So, again, I think there would be, I think it would be good to have, I don't think our community would kind of react, you know, as Killingley did. Again, we're not in a big heated state competition right now, so I think there wouldn't be that kind of backlash. I would just ask that it's two syllables, because we do have a pretty good cheer that goes on. It's called Let's Go Sachems, and you need two syllables to do the Let's Go Sachems. So, that's probably the course.
I agree with that. Want that mentioned?
But that's got to be... You know, I think Vinnie should be one of the, can someone write that down? That should be one of the proposals. Two syllables, that works.
So, tell me the history of not using any imagery. It would seem to me that speaks for itself. You've had a mascot, you've had a half-mascot.
Yeah.
And so, you would have thought, back when their decision was, we shouldn't have any imagery around this, you would have scrapped the mascot.
We, in 2014, when the juniors made the presentation, one of the conversations that they had had at the time was with one of the Mohegan representatives. And the explanation they got at the time was that the Native American community found the Ram profile, the Native American profile that has been one of our kind of insignias.
The one with the feathers?
Yes.
The Western Indian, not the Eastern Indian.
Correct, yes. They found that highly offensive. And the reasoning for any of, I think, the Native American tribes for having an issue with this is pretty similar. Most mascots are comic figures or they're animals. And so, you know, you're equating their pride, culture, and part Tunisian creatures and animals. They were okay at the time with Sachem. And the reason being is that Sachem is a European term. It wasn't a term that the Native Americans themselves felt terribly attached to. So, when we moved, you know, when we moved away from 2014 without a name change, we have pretty much informally moved away from use of the profile. You'll see it occasionally, but we really moved towards using just the R or Ram. And that was the price of having Sachems as our representative and not being able to have either a printed insignia that we could, we could share and be proud of, and obviously not having a mascot. So, it was really a, you know, because we didn't formally remove it, we informally moved away from using the profile. Again, it'll pop up in places, but...
I mean, I could see Redman being really offensive, both. What is a Sachem and why is that offensive?
And again, I think the...
Is Sachem a tribe?
It's a chief. It's a leader.
I think it's a leader.
Means they're respected.
Yeah. And, again, the Native American culture will tell you that we don't get to make that decision. The Native American tribes have told us, it's offensive to us to have any school insignia associated with our culture.
All right. Would someone like to make a motion? You're going to do it? It's right there, you just beat it.
I propose a motion to authorize the superintendent in principle to initiate process for the choosing of a new mascot.
That works?
Any discussions? All those in favor?
Are we going to set a timetable on this, in this motion? Or, you know, I think we should have a timetable. Like, September? Or does you want to have a timetable? You are?
I'd welcome a timetable.
We need a timetable, you need a timetable for the court.
Yeah, well, really, we would need it before, again, if a mascot's going to appear on the court, we would, we would need to be coming back to no later than June.
Because that's going to happen this summer.
Yeah, right.
Is that enough time?
Right.
For survey, all of, you know, if you want to do community and staff and...
You know, I do believe it's enough time because we're not, we're not engaging in the process of should we change the mascot? We're engaging in the process of what should the mascot be? And perfectly, I've been inundated already with names. I get emails almost on a daily basis for, how about this, how about this? And after all that time and all those names, there's really only a handful of ones that I would say, the students would be like, I kept behind that. So, I don't think it's going to be a great deal of time to do. The time is going to be in organizing and expressing. I think there's going to be, you're going to need some teaching and help those students and community members who may not quite understand why it is that we're doing this. So, there's going to be some time for education. But then, the actual choosing is coming up with a list and whittling that down list and making choices. I don't think that's going to be...
There are some candidates that are out there.
Excuse me?
What are some of the candidates?
Well, I, other than Vinnie, I'd be hesitant to say anything because I don't want to move it in favor. I'm going to let the students be the ones to share whichever ones might be.
Other than June, so are there any other places in the school that would need to be?
Well, and that'll be part of that transition program. You know, there's a plaque outside of the main office in the high school that includes a list of the building committee members' names, and it basically was placed when the building was first moved. You know, there is that, the Native American profile on that. I'm not suggesting that we need to necessarily chip off every, I mean, it is part of our history. I'm not suggesting that we entirely erase our history. I think, obviously, the gym floor, I think areas, uniforms and those sorts of things.
But nothing major like the gym floor, so, like, you've been around the building...
No.
No. No.
Helipad, no. Helipad's good.
So, have you taken out the tomahawk chop or just for that one?
What is the tomahawk chop?
Ray started that.
I had to ask.
Yeah, Ray started that like a third year ago.
I had to ask my Cherokee colleague for the tomahawk chop.
I just ordered it out there, I don't really care.
I would welcome a timeline. I think, you know, June would be a reasonable time.
Are we reaching out to the community in any way?
Yes.
All right, so all those in favor? Are you in favor? All those not in favor? Okay. Any abstentions?
I just, you were doing questions and I thought you were going to finish going around, so I'll go ahead and throw out comments now at this point after the fact. So, I don't, this is, this is another instance of, I feel like we went right to choose without a discussion about, you know, should we choose and look at it again? And here it is at the meeting, and it just passed. So, that's, I'm just not really sure that's in the spirit of collaboration that we talk about so frequently. I'm not opposed to changing the mascot, having the discussion and everything, but I just feel like we fast-forwarded really quickly across any discussion and went right into selection mode without really a clear definition on the process, financial impacts, and a bunch of other impacts. And we're literally, I think, rushing to, you know, meet sanding floors and things like that. So, I just, that's just a comment. I'm not really sure that the proposed legislation and the op-ed piece and things like that are, they're factors for sure, but there's, op-ed pieces about all kinds of things and proposed legislation that doesn't ever come to fruition. So, I'm not really sure that those are, those are driving factors. We talked about it a little bit, the definition of Sachem, that I just doing a little bit of research on Sunday over what it means, and Mr. Leslie talked about it a few moments ago. There's absolutely nothing disrespectful or dishonorable about that word if you actually look at it a little bit. I found schools all over the country that are still, and districts that have that as a symbol and a name. And just as a, this is completely anecdotal, but I've lived in town for 10 years and had kids in the school system, and literally, until I opened my packet on Sunday, it's the first time I've ever heard it as an issue.
It was an issue for me when I moved here.
Well, that's great.
I immediately went, wow, I'm behind the times.
And may or may not be behind the times, and that's certainly a perspective, but just as I was thinking about it, is it offensive? What's offensive? Things, some of the names, some of the Native American names that are around are absolutely, I mean, you see them and you hear them, and you know if it's, it's not a good thing. But just a fun fact, you know, tied directly to my background, every helicopter that the United States Army flies today and has and continues to build are named after Native American tribes. So, governments have changed and everything else, but every military aircraft that men, servicemen and women are flying today are named after Native American tribes, very specifically to include newly-launched aircraft. So, just comments, I'm late to the game, and we work on what we're on, but...
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I think it's got 11.6...